Call the meeting to order, please. If you're able to stand, stand with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Missouri Constitution has a preamble. We, the people of Missouri, with profound reverence for the supreme ruler of the universe and grateful for his goodness, do establish this constitution with a better government of the state. Invocation with Ted Martin.
Good evening, please join my prayer. Our most gracious, loving Father, thank you for another beautiful day in the Ozarks. Father, we invite you into these chambers tonight as we do the business of the city, but we ask that everything we do tonight will be honoring and glorifying to you. Father, we thank you for the 200-plus employees, including Stephanie Crawford, who we recognize tonight as a City of Branson Employee of the Month, recognized for her work, and we just recognize all of our employees that work hard for the citizens here in Branson and for visitors as well. Father, thanks for this board, for their time and their commitment to our community. Father, we love you, praise you. In Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you, Ted. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
King?
Here.
Whitis?
Here.
Simmons?
Here.
Akers?
Here.
Gaines?
Here.
Milton?
Here.
C?
Here.
Your Honor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, Councilman Bill Skanes would like to make a special presentation. Would Stephanie Crawford, please, come forward?
This is exactly why the doctor ordered glasses for me periodically. I can read this. Nice to see you. It is my privilege to present the City of Branson Service and Excellent Employee of the Month Award for 2020 to Utilities Office Assistant Stephanie Crawford. This award is to recognize employees that have gone above and beyond and whose performance exemplifies the City of Branson's values. She's done an exceptional job of stepping up and making sure things get done during these tough times for everybody. Not only she come up with assistance to help us keep organized in this chaotic time, she's also created online training programs for employees to access and keep up with the training during the scheduled week of off during COVID-19. Not only did she do that in her spare time, she also helped with Career Days, coordinating emergency management training, saved the city money by creating and printing our own water quality brochure. I'm glad it didn't say printing money. How about that? Okay. There isn't much she won't do to help others and is always looking to improve the way we do things to make things ever more efficient. On behalf of the mayor, Board of Aldermen, City Administrator, City Staff, it is my honor to present this plaque naming Stephanie Crawford as the City of Branson's October 2020 Service and Excellent Employee of the Month. Thank you very much.
Keep up the good work. Do the elbow.
There we go.
Stephanie?
I just want to thank everybody with the city, and I'm very happy and glad to be working here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're glad you're here. At this time, Madam Clerk, do we have people who are signed up for the public...
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay. Speaker de quorum. In order to give chance for people to speak tonight, we'd like to ask if you're speaking on an item and you keep your comments succinct, do the topic in as short as possible. You are allowed to be only... You will be allowed to only speak once on an item. Please do not repeat what has already been said by another speaker. Once public discussion has ended on an item, the board starts their discussion. No additional comments will be taken from the audience unless a board member chooses to invite someone back to the podium. Please remember to speak in the mic, state your name, your address, and there is a five-minute limit. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Our first speaker is Doug Clark.
Andrews Street, Branson, Missouri. Phone number is 417-337-4545. If anybody wants any further information about this outside of the box, I'll be glad to cover it with anybody.
We just want to know where you got your hat. We like your hat.
I think I got it in Eureka Springs, maybe, a couple of years ago. Anyway, my concern here has been all along. I've been coming down here for quite a bit, and what is directing traffic on all of this stuff that we're doing, and I've mentioned this before, is coming down as recommended things from the World Health Organization. And I've done quite a bit of work looking at the United Nations for about 30 years, and they are not our friends, and usually when the chips are down, they vote against us every time on you name it. So they're the main instigators on our drug policy that Nixon put in, the policing, the new policing system that they're incorporating, and several other areas that I'm not really wild about. Education is another big area that they are... They have... We already have it here under our noses, along with the education system. The World Health Organization, the gentleman that instigated, this is what he said. Now, see if this doesn't key into what's going on here in our country right now. He says, "To achieve a world government is necessary to remove from the minds of men their individualism, loyalty to family, traditions, national patriotism, and religious dogmas." If COVID isn't doing this, in conjunction with all the protesting from the other side there that are anarchist and actually really anarchists and people that would really like to get rid of our country, the guy is a psychiatrist specializing in behavior modification. That's what the World Health Organization is all about. It's scanarian operant conditioning, all kinds of psychological programs. They use to do that primarily. UNESCO is doing that in our schools. There isn't any question that they aren't doing it. You just have to dig in and read a bunch of minutia, you know? So that's the pitfall you have. And a coincidence, Alger Hiss wrote the United Nations Charter or was involved in it, and he was caught as a spy, sat right next to Franklin Roosevelt practically the whole time he was in office. You know, so that's the undercurrent of what we're having going on here under our noses, and they're using this COVID-19 thing here in conjunction with everything else they've done. So... And the worst thing about it, they're inconsistent on what they say. They'll say one thing one month, and they'll come right back around and give you information for making a decision on something and say something completely different. And here's the first one. This, it says, "The media statement, the role and the need of masks during COVID." This was in March 6th. They said, "If you are healthy, you do not need to wear a mask." That's the CD... That's the World Health Organization's recommendation that went straight through to the CDC. That's where it goes and the policy goes. So... And then, let's see here. This is on April the 6th. They changed it, and they said, "However, the use of a mask alone is insufficient to provide adequate level of protection, and measures should also be adopted." You can find this stuff right on these people's websites in plain sight, but, you know, it's, you know... I take time to look at it because I know what these people are and how they operate. So it goes on here. So, in March 20th, it says, "If you're healthy, you don't need a mask." On April 6th, they said, "You might alone can't protect, and the masks aren't sufficient in all cases." CDC 17, "Missed tests are 90%... Have 90% false positives." They had 90-some... 90,000 cases, and only 9,000 they could verify people had a positive test. The rest of them were false positives. 9-3, "People without symptoms do not need testing." CDC again, New York Times. 7-25, "The World Health Organization Emergency Code for Coding the COVID-19 Case Definition." They changed that.
30 seconds, Doug. 30 seconds.
Okay. The COVID-19, they've changed the definition of how you record a COVID death, what the criteria for labeling somebody that dies from ingrown toenails is going to be COVID-19. The vital statistics part of this has reported this stuff three or four times, changing the criteria on how they count all this. And then the smoking gun here is an instruction for use in vitro diagnostic tests for the PCR test. It's about a 50-page document, page 39. It tells you they do not...
You're out of time, Doug.
They do not have a specimen of the COVID-19. They do not have the virus available.
You're out of time.
So your question would be, how are they telling us that they have a valid virus that they're using?
Doug, please, you're out of time. Thank you.
Okay. It's out of bounds what we're doing here because we're not reading the documentation right, and, you know, I'd be... I would be embarrassed if I was in a position where I was...
Doug, please, you're out of time.
If I knew that we were using false data to do what we're doing, it should be an embarrassment.
Please, speakers are here to share their thoughts and so on. It's not a public forum where we clap and applaud. It's... The quorum here is to listen and then make decisions. Next speaker?
Cynthia Carley.
Hi, I'm Cynthia Carley. I live at 301 Prairie Drive in Branson. My number's 417-230-5737. I'm here about the special permit that was issued to Wild Branson to begin exhibiting large animals, lions, tigers, ligers, servals, and such in the facility next to the Walmart on 76. This would be a huge embarrassment for the City of Branson if we allowed this to go on. With the event of the Tiger King, and I use the word documentary loosely, it's a black eye, and the City of Branson is mentioned in it specifically that someone in the City of Branson paid $5,000 for illegal animals from Joe Exotic when he was on the run. Were named in it, and if we open, if we allow someone to exhibit these animals in the City of Branson, we're going to become a laughingstock, and we're trying to bring tourists back. I don't work for anybody related to the animals or anything. I volunteer with Turpentine Creek Wildlife Refuge in Eureka Springs, and I have seen the animals that come in, including the eight that we just... They just rescued two weeks ago, one near death, one lion just from total lack. I did some undercover work on Winnie Wood Park, which is where Joe Exotic was in Oklahoma. I saw the animals hurt up front. I was in the courtroom when Joe was on trial. I saw the pictures of the five tiger bodies on a tarp that they had pulled out of a garbage pile, and we cannot allow that image to come to Branson. It's not right that we're exhibiting these animals. They don't deserve to be in cages like that, and he's describing 10-by-10 metal cages that they'll be in at night? Well, that's like nine hours of their life in a metal enclosure that they can barely turn around in. I mean, if you've seen a 450-pound tiger, a 10-by-10 isn't a great amount of space to spend nine hours a day in, and ligers, more than anything, should never be exhibited. Ligers are a hybrid animal that people bred just because they wanted to play God, and they pay no attention to what happens to those animals as they age. And what happens with most ligers is they die a very young and painful death because they don't have the gene that stops growth. So it's much like dwarfism in people. At a certain point, their organs and their structure can't support each other, and we've had that, and we've had... Now, we also know that there's a problem with immune systems in these ligers and in these Thai ligers and Li-Tai-Li ligers, that they're just trying to play God for no other reason than to say, "I can." And we're trying to teach the young people that any kind of handling of these animals... Now, I realize that this guy has not said that he's going to be doing cub petting at this point, but that's the next step often, and we have to try... We're trying to get across to our people that, yes, you may pay to handle this tiger cub, but when he's three months old and too big and too dangerous to handle, he's either killed or he's put in a cage in the back and never looked at again for 20 years. They can often live over 20 years, and it's just not right. It's much like if we tried to open... The aquarium is great. They will have no mammals, but if we tried to take that space and open a SeaWorld with all the bad press that's come to SeaWorld and their stock has bottomed out because of it, we're next for that if we encourage the exhibiting of these animals. At Turpentine Creek, they do give them a place to live out. Every single animal has a grass enclosure and space. They've worked very hard to do that, 28 years, to correct the mistakes that we have allowed to happen in our towns and all around this country. So I would really love for Branson to be a leader in saying, "No, we will not exhibit these."
You have 30 seconds, ma'am.
The zoo on 248 broke this violation when they bought cubs, when they opened. When you buy a cub, a lion or a tiger cub from a dealer, just like a drug dealer, you're telling them, "If you continue to breed them, somebody's going to buy them. You're going to get money from them." So we'd like... I would really like for us to be able to stop this before it gets too out of hand. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
That's our last speaker.
That's public section speaker. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mayor.
We begin with... I'm sorry.
I had a question for Cynthia. I'm not sure what regulations we have at the city level. Have you talked to our city administrator?
I've talked to the animal control officers, and unfortunately, we don't have good regulations. They're trying to correct that, but we're behind. The state of Missouri was behind. There's still five states in this country that don't have laws against you being able to buy a lion or a tiger. In Missouri, you can do it. We have a law. It's got a giant loophole in it. You just need to have an enclosure and pay $200 or $500 or whatever the permit fee is this week, and that's it. And it is very true that there are more carnivores in the backyards of the United... in the United States than there are in the wild, and we may not have the laws against it at this point, but we need to be able to say, "This isn't right."
Okay.
We just shouldn't do it.
So this needs to be addressed at the state level, it sounds like.
Well, it is, and we're trying to get... There's a Big Cat Safety Act, which we're trying to get on a federal level, but with everything else going on, we can't get it out of committee, and it will be handled on... But we have something going on in the City of Branson, and we can't turn our backs on that. Where these animals are now in Branson West, there was an attack, and as a result, Turpentine Creek has those animals. We don't... We don't want that in the City of Branson. We're trying to bring tourism back. Let's not put another black eye on it.
I'm sorry?
You have another specific question?
Well, so to your knowledge, the business you're referring to by Walmart, they're operating legally, right?
So far...
So what you're bringing to our attention is having to change laws, and it's not that like they're doing anything in Branson illegally that we can affect?
So far, they're not.
Okay.
According to the animal control officers, they do still have... They got their permit approved, which is where I would have liked to have stopped it.
Okay.
But they have to meet USDA, Fish and Wildlife, and one other regulatory agency. But I would just love to see an attitude of, "It may not be illegal, but let's try and not do this."
Okay. Thank you.
At this point in time, we're to the consent agenda. Please note that numbers 15, 16, 17, and 18 have been asked to be removed from the consent agenda. Are there any members of the audience that would like other items moved down from the consent agenda? Any items the board would like moved down?
You did say 15, 16, and 17?
And 18.
18.
At this time, I would like, if there's no other items, I would like Madam Clerk to read the items on the consent agenda as amended.
Your Honor, the items on the consent agendas are as follows. Approval of the Board of Aldermen minutes of September 22nd, 2020 regular meeting. September 24th, 2020 joint meeting. Acknowledged receipt of minutes of the Planning Commission regular meeting of August 4th, 2020. Final reading of Bill Number 5863. An ordinance approving the contract renewal of WCA Waste Corporation pertaining to trash removal for the City of Branson and authorize the mayor to execute the contract. Final reading of Bill Number 5864. An ordinance approving the contract renewal with John Morris Equipment and Supply Company for furnishing and maintaining coin-operated laundry equipment in the Branson Lakeside RV Park and authorize the mayor to execute the contract. Final reading of Bill Number 5865. An ordinance approving the contract with Snell Grove Outdoor Services LLC pertaining to mowing and weed eating services and authorize the mayor to execute the contract. Final reading of Bill Number 5866. An ordinance approving the contract of pro-lawn and landscape pertaining to tree trimming for the City of Branson and authorize the mayor to execute the contract. Final reading of Bill Number 5867. An ordinance amending the adopted 2020 budget for the City of Branson to adjust monies for the Parks Internal Service Fund. Final reading of Bill Number 5868. An ordinance amending the adopted 2020 budget for the City of Branson to adjust monies for the Water Sewer Capital Fund. Final reading of Bill Number 5869. An ordinance approving a reimbursement with Aldi Incorporated pertaining to the installation of a sewer main extension and authorize the mayor to execute the contract. Final reading of Bill Number 5870. An ordinance approving the renewal of a contract with PDC Laboratories Incorporated for wastewater analysis for the city's wastewater treatment facilities and authorize the mayor to execute the contract. Final reading of Bill Number 5871. An ordinance approving the renewal of a contract with Central Power Systems and Services for generator and backup pump maintenance for the Utilities and Fire Departments and authorize the mayor to execute the contract. Final reading of Bill Number 5872. An ordinance approving the third renewal of the services contract with Specialty Air Conditioning Services Incorporated pertaining to HVAC maintenance services for the city and authorize the mayor to execute the contract. Final reading of Bill Number 5873. An ordinance approving the second renewal of the services contract with Bills Electric Incorporated pertaining to electrical maintenance services for the city and authorize the mayor to execute the contract. Final reading of Bill Number 5874. An ordinance approving the first reading of the... The first renewal of the services contract with DH Pace Company Incorporated DBA Overhead Door Company of Springfield pertaining to overhead door maintenance services for the City of Branson facilities and authorize the mayor to execute the contract. That concludes the reading of the consent agenda.
Thank you. The floor is now open for a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda as amended.
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ask you to please vote on the consent agenda. Six Aldermen present, yes, six. Alderman King, Milton, Whitis, C., Skanes, and Simmons all vote yes. Passed. All right. Ready now to move on to item 15. At this time, I need to recuse myself for the next four items. Because of the nature of our conflict of interest laws, I have a son who's involved in the next four items, and so as mayor, I refuse myself from any discussion in regard to that, and I ask Mr. Simmons, who's the president of the board, to take over the meeting here this time.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, would you please introduce item 15?
Your Honor, this is the final reading of Bill Number 5875. An ordinance approving the 2021 medical insurance premiums from Anthem, Blue Cross, and Blue Shield for the City of Branson and authorize the mayor to execute the contract.
You've heard the final reading of Bill Number 5875. Do I have a motion approving this bill? So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Anyone in the council chambers' audience wishing to speak regarding this matter? Anyone in the... Oh. I see why we're split up into two groups. Any Alderman?
He has a report I think he needed to give.
Well, actually, it doesn't show that, and this is a consent agenda item, so I think he's just there in case we want to ask questions, right?
I am, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir, just a question. As we had the discussion in the committee, there was no increases in this. If you would sort of pass that information on to everybody else who wasn't in there?
Yeah, all of our benefits renewals were flat for 2021, same price, same everything.
So there's no cost increase?
The reason this was brought down from consent is... Was there any changes?
No. The reason it was brought down from consent was based on the mayor's association with our broker for services.
Which is the same reason he excused himself from the meeting when it originally came up, when the item came up two weeks ago. Okay, any other questions? Vote is six yes and zero no. Alderman King, yes. Alderman Milton, yes. Alderman Whitis, yes. Alderman C., yes. Alderman Skanes, yes. And Alderman Simmons, yes. Okay, item number 16. That does pass, by the way, six to nothing. Item number 16. Madam Clerk, would you please provide the introduction for this item?
Your Honor, this is the final reading of Bill Number 5876. An ordinance approving the 2021 life and AD&amp;D insurance premiums from Anthem Life Insurance Company for the City of Branson and authorize the mayor to execute the contract.
Okay, you've heard the final reading of Bill Number 5876. Do I have a motion approving the bill? So move.
Second.
A motion and a second. Do we have any questions for Jan on this one? Okay, anyone in the council chamber audience wishing to speak regarding it?
Just the same reiteration, there was no increase in cost on this?
It's... It ends up being about 17 cents per $1,000 of wages that employees are paid is what they're covered with respect to medical insurance. It was flat from 2020.
Okay, thank you.
So, I'm sorry, Jan. So again, the only reason it's brought down from consent to the regular items is because Mayor Aker... Mayor Akers wasn't... Maybe involved with... Or didn't want a conflict of interest.
Exactly.
So, but nothing in the... What we approved last time has changed.
Right, nothing's changed.
Any other questions from the Alderman? The vote is six-zero. Alderman King, yes. Alderman Milton, yes. Alderman Whitis, yes. Alderman C., yes. Alderman Skanes, yes. Alderman Simmons, yes. The vote passes. Okay, Madam Clerk, would you please provide the introduction for item number 17?
Your Honor, this is the final reading of Bill Number 5877. An ordinance approving the 2021 dental insurance premiums from Delta Dental of Missouri for the City of Branson.
Okay. You've heard the final reading, Number 5877. Do I have a motion approving this bill? So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Anyone in the chambers wishing to speak regarding this item? Any Alderman?
Same questions that Larry and I asked before.
Exactly the same answer.
Okay.
Any further questions? Vote is six yes and zero no. Alderman King, yes. Alderman Milton, yes. Alderman Whitis, yes. Alderman C., yes. Alderman Skanes, yes. And Alderman Simmons, yes. The vote passes. Okay, Madam Clerk, would you please introduce item number 18?
Your Honor, this is the final reading of Bill Number 5878. An ordinance approving the City of Branson's employer and employee costs for 2021 medical dental and life insurance coverages and the city's contributions to employee health savings accounts.
Okay. You've heard the final reading of Bill Number 5878. Do I have a motion approving this bill? So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Anyone in the... Anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak on this matter? Any Aldermen? Hearing none, please vote. The vote is six yes, zero no. Alderman King, yes. Alderman Milton, yes. Alderman Whitis, yes. Alderman C., yes. Alderman Skanes, yes. Then we have... Madam Clerk, would you please introduce item number 18?
I think we're done with that.
That's it? Weren't there four? Did we already do four?
Yes.
Okay. Gee, it's amazing how time flies when you're having fun. Then let's call the mayor back, please.
Mr. Simmons? Yes. Ready for item number 19? Madam Clerk, would you please provide the information?
Your Honor, this is a resolution certifying the 2020 Loggers delegates.
All right. We have a staff report from Jan Fisher.
Mayor, members of the board, we do this on an annual basis. We come to you asking for... To select two delegates to the annual meeting for the Loggers meeting that will be held at Tantera this year. I'm sorry, Margaritaville. Old habits don't happen.
Changed their name, yeah.
Yeah. And it will be held virtually as well. So our employees' delegates will be able to do both, one or the other. Each year, you know, we bring to you a selection for employee delegates and employer delegates. We typically locate an employer delegate, which represents the board, that they can go and listen to seminars and things like that and find out the different changes and actually vote on resolutions that the actual board at Loggers puts forward. And on the same venue, we also have the employee delegate, which we select through a secret ballot. And for this year, our employee... Employer and employee delegates, we've selected Marcia Chapman. She's the senior accountant responsible for payroll. We want her to be the employer delegate. And the employee delegate selected by staff was Daryl Henry from the Fire Department. I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for him? Do I have a motion adopting this resolution?
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Anyone in the council chambers' audience wishing to speak regarding this matter? Anyone here wishing to speak? Anyone in the courtroom audience wishing to speak? Do we have access?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Apparently no speakers. Any Aldermen wishing to speak to this?
I have a question, Your Honor. Out of curiosity, do we select a different employer delegate each year?
Usually we do.
Okay, thank you.
Any others? All right. Please vote.
Gets serenaded by Charlie Brown, too.
Six Aldermen present, yes, six. Judy King, Larry Milton, Jamie Whitis, Jeff C., Bill Skane, Bob Simmons, all vote yes. Passed. Item number 20. Madam Clerk, would you please provide the introduction for this item?
Your Honor, this is a public hearing and a resolution of the City of Branson, Missouri, stating intent to seek funding through the Community Development Block Grant Program and authorize the mayor to pursue activities in attempt to secure funding.
Thank you. We'll now open the public hearing. First, a staff report from Jamie Roush.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. We have tonight with us Brandon Jensen with the Southwest Missouri Council of Governments to speak in detail to you regarding this. Basically, what we're doing, we are attempting to apply for a Community Development Block Grant through the state that would help us fund the flood protection for the wastewater treatment plant. We do approve of this, and I will let Brandon come ahead and speak to you all on this matter. Thank you.
Brandon, we welcome you to the podium as soon as it's all ready for you. Thank you for cleaning that up. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Roush, and thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the board. So, as Jamie said, my name's Brandon Jensen. I'm an associate planner with the Southwest Missouri Council of Governments. We provide comprehensive planning, economic development, and grant writing and administration services for a 10-county area. So tonight is really the culmination of a little over a year's worth of pretty intense collaboration between my office, city staff, the city's contracted engineering firm, and various state and federal agencies that have gotten us to the point where we are today. So the point of this public hearing is really to provide information on the application that the city is intending to submit for two different pots of funds under the Community Development Block Grant Program, which is administered through the Missouri Department of Economic Development. So I have a list of things that I'm going to speak on specifically, but then after that, I will welcome any questions from the board, city staff, or any citizens that are in attendance. So as Jamie said, this project is floodproofing the Compton Wastewater Treatment Plant located at 601 Compton Drive, Branson, Missouri 65616. CDBG, the acronym for the Community Development Block Grant Program, requires that their applications meet a national objective. So the two that we're using under these applications are urgent need mitigation and long-term recovery, both of which relate back to the flood of 2017 when we... The city was forced to erect temporary flood protections to prevent the wastewater treatment plant from being inundated. I can never say that word right. So in general, this project is to design and construct a new flood wall that will completely encompass the wastewater treatment plant. It'll be primarily a ring levee wall that will be nine feet above elevation plus an additional three feet to protect beyond the 100-year floodplain. It will include two floodgates that allow entrance and exit of the facility during normal events, but then can also be raised to provide complete waterproof protection at those entrance points to the facility whenever necessary. It also includes a few dewatering wells for a structure that's not able to be encompassed in the ring levee. So the wall length is approximately 2,200 linear feet, could potentially be driven down to bedrock, but we're waiting on final geotech work to determine how deep that wall will have to be driven down to make sure the water doesn't bubble up underneath. So as I said, it's going to be nine feet above grade plus three feet for that protection. The nature of this funding requires us to identify that there will be no displacement of residents. Since this doesn't involve the acquisition of any residential properties, we don't anticipate that occurring. So the total project cost is estimated to be $10,752,038. This may sound a little bit familiar. We've brought a previous application to you folks to the Economic Development Administration, which is a federal agency, which was provisionally awarded for $3 million to go directly towards the construction line item of this project. As I said, we're applying to two other CDBG grant funding pots, so the long-term recovery and mitigation. So the mitigation is anticipated to be a $5 million application, all of which will go to the construction line item. And then the CDBG long-term recovery is going to be $2,752,038. $1,633,538 of that will be towards the construction line item. So that line item is anticipated to be fully funded across the three grant projects. That long-term recovery also includes $1,112,000 for engineering, which is also fully funded by that one application. And it also includes $5,000 of administration and $1,500 of pre-award costs, which is to help cover the work that we're doing to make sure you're eligible to apply for these projects. In terms of timeline for the project, we've identified that we will be able to receive environmental clearance. So this will require an in-depth environmental review that my office has already started. We anticipate receiving that clearance in March of 2021, with construction to start in February of '22. There will be some final design work that needs to occur during that intermediary phase. The project is anticipated to be 50% complete in August of 2022 and fully complete in February of '23, with the grants to be closed out in April of 2023. So the project includes only the City of Branson, but it does include my office as a sub-applicant to provide project management and grant administration services. We have... We don't anticipate any environmental impacts. As I said, we're currently undergoing the environmental review, so we have already received a no-effect determination from the State Historic Preservation Office. And we have also began consultations with the Fish and Wildlife Service. This project will include the removal of, I believe, 36 trees, some of which are considered to be potential habitat for two species of endangered bats. So we're working with their office now to make sure that we only tear down those trees whenever the bats aren't anticipated to be roosting in them. There are no anticipated environmental impacts to the project from the surrounding environment. This will require several permits, the first of which is a local floodplain development permit, so that'll be issued by the city, a land disturbance permit from the state, and then two federal permits. The first is called a Federal 401. It's required under the Clean Water Act, and it's whenever there's any potential change to discharge into navigable waters. Since this is a wastewater treatment plant, it's anticipated that we'll be required to get that. There's also the Federal 404 permit, also required under the Clean Water Act, which is required whenever there's the possibility of dirt being discharged into navigable waterways. So we'll be required to make sure that there's like silk control fencing and other measures to make sure that there's not significant runoff into Lake Tanycomo. There are potential modifications in the allowed timeframe for land clearance. So as I said, that we may have to modify that project timeline a little bit to make sure we tear out those trees whenever it doesn't impact those endangered bat species. And we'll be required to have general soil erosion and water quality protection measures. As far as the environmental review, that's technically going to begin after the grant is... After the grants are both awarded. We've completed a preliminary environmental review for the Economic Development Administration grant, that $3 million that the city's already been provisionally awarded. But the environmental review will require us to determine which level we're required to analyze. It basically identifies the type of activities we're going to do, and that determines how in-depth of a study that we'll have to complete. We're not allowed to complete any construction or design activities until that environmental clearance is completed, which is that March of '21 timeline. It'll include the SHIPA... The State Historic Preservation Office consultation with any Native or Native American tribes, as well as any other environmental agencies. They'll have a review period. We'll be required to complete an analysis according to statutory checklist, so that's looking at the potential of any hazardous materials to be present, potential impacts to floodplains and wetlands, noise, water quality, all of those environmental factors that need to be considered. We will also complete an eight-step decision-making process, basically making sure that there's no other alternative to the project that we're proposing, which is a string levee wall. After we complete all of that, the city... The mayor will sign the environmental review record, will submit that to the agency, and it'll go through a series of review periods from various state and federal agencies, culminating in the city submitting a request for the release of funds. So that's basically the city saying, we've done this analysis. Here are the conditions that we'll need to make sure we complete. And then we will be issued the authorization to use grant funds. So that's when we can start to complete those design and construction activities. I have been designated as the city's preparer for the environmental review. Again, Brandon Jensen, associate planner with SimCog. And that's pretty much all that I... We are required to cover under the CDBG program in this public hearing, but I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Right. Does... Do any of the Aldermen have any questions at this time?
Couple statements.
Early in the process, obviously.
Couple statements. This is... There's humor in this. Okay, I want to say this. You're talking about environmental impact. This thing is not done in a short period of time, and we have another flood, and that hits Lake Tanycomo. I sure hope that was part of the process. That's no joke, part of that, because it will destroy a lot of this town and the people that utilize those services. So I hope very strongly that that is put in there.
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all I wanted to say on that.
Larry?
Brandon, thanks for doing all this work. A few questions. Will this have any impact to the adjoining neighborhood to Compton of Lakewood Estates?
There's none anticipated, but that will be a part of the in-depth environmental review that we'll be conducting. As I said, we'll analyze noise impacts, so we'll determine what level of noise will be generated from construction activities. And there may be... If it's too close to adjoining residential properties, there may be some mitigation conditions of approval that'll be required. So that's a part of getting that authorization to use grant funds. We have to look at all of these different environmental impacts, including impacts to adjoining properties, and then properly mitigate those.
Okay, well, I'm a trustee at Lakewood Estate, so I know my subdivision is going to want to stay abreast of this. You said the wall's going to be nine feet?
It'll be nine feet above elevation plus an additional three feet, which is required by the funding agencies. So that nine-foot elevation is right at the 100-year floodplain level. So basically, what occurred in 2017, and then we'll be adding an additional three feet for protection since this is considered a critical facility by the federal government.
Who did that analysis, that the nine feet is as high as we need to go with that?
That was done by the city's originally procured engineering firm for the Phase One analysis, and that work is being finalized right now by HDR, which is the city's contracted engineering firm for the Phase Two design. As I said, so between March '21 and February of '22, that'll be the final design and engineering. So that'll be them looking at doing hydrologic modeling, so determining if a 100-year flood event occurred, how high is the water going to get? And then also doing that geotechnical work, so making sure that the soil underneath is able to support the weight of the wall. So that'll be finalized during that period.
Is that information public knowledge? Public information?
I... The full preliminary engineering report is a part of this application, which is public knowledge, but I don't know if it's been made available on the city's website.
I'm not sure I'll divulge it. I'm just curious, because I know I'm going to be asked questions from Lakewood Estates, right? You're building a wall this tall right next to 100 homes that are this high, right? So there's going to be questions with that. So I'd appreciate if I could stay in the loop on that.
It is about 350 pages of really riveting information.
Maybe there could be an executive summary or something. I just know I'm going to get asked questions about...
I think at some time, Larry... Good point, Alderman Milton. I think at some point, this will be a study session, where we'll actually open it up and have reports and stuff given so people can see.
Okay.
It'll be important for communication. But this is very preliminary. This is just getting the dollars in place.
And these endangered bats? When you remove their homes, and I know... Well, I don't know. What if they... What if these bats move into Lakewood Estates?
You become a very batty subdivision.
I will say, so Fish and Wildlife Service has identified the typical habitats of bats. They include the undersides of bridges and trees mostly. There's very little documentation of them roosting in houses or like in eaves or anything like that unless it's abandoned buildings. Bats are generally more afraid of humans than humans are afraid of bats. But we will... That's a part of that environmental review. We'll only be allowed to tear down the trees when they aren't living there.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Any other comments? Jamie?
I don't have any unless you have any questions for me.
Anyone in the audience wishing to comment?
Your Honor, Your Honor?
Yes.
Just for clarification, we are in a public hearing right now, so we want to make sure that all comments are open right now for pub... For the public hearing portion of this item.
Okay. I was just asking if anyone had...
Yeah, I just want to make sure... Yeah, I just want to make sure, it's a requirement that we make sure we have any opportunity for public hearing comments.
So, is there anyone from a public comments here in this audience? Is there anyone in the courtroom audience? We've heard from, questions from the board. The public hearing is now closed. Do I have a motion adopting this resolution?
So, move.
Second.
Go ahead, you got a second, all right. And then there's another section here, Madam Clerk, in regard to questions on this item after the public hearing is closed.
So, the public hearing has been closed. We have a motion, a second on the floor, and now we're open for discussion on that.
Okay, so again, I ask, anyone here in the council chambers have any questions or comments? Ask for the courtroom, anyone in the courtroom. Any aldermen have any questions additional?
I'm just glad this thing's finally getting to this point, that it happens that we don't have another flood.
Amen.
Please vote.
2023, that's seven years. No. No, nobody started.
Thank you, Brandon. Yes, six, six aldermen present. Julia King, Larry Milton, Jamie Whitis, Jeff C., Bill Skane, and Bob Simmons, all vote yes. Passed. Item number 23, Madam Clerk, please provide the introduction.
Your Honor, we're under item number 21.
21, I'm sorry.
Your Honor, this is a resolution approving a special event permit application for Branson Annoration Parade.
All right. Have a staff report from Joe Hornicle.
Mayor, members of the board, good evening. This year's event is proposed to be held Sunday, December 6th, with it starting at 5:00 p.m. The proposed event is also requesting for the streets to be closed, as you can see here on the graphic on the screen, starting at 8:00 a.m. in the morning until 8:00 p.m. in the evening. This will actually be kind of a partial closure until the event actually starts at 5:00. They just want to make sure that parked cars and things like that are moved out of the way in appropriate timing for the event to take place. As I mentioned, this is the same event that's been utilized for several years past, so staff is very comfortable with it, the event sponsor is very comfortable with it, and as we always do, we, we review the costs associated with these events, and the police department provided a total of $12,901.40 to assist with this event. As you all know, we've mentioned before with these, you all do have the opportunity under Branson Municipal Code, Section 94-65H, to recoup these costs if you so choose. Staff recommends approval. Happy to answer any questions.
You've heard Joel's report. Do I have a motion adopting this resolution?
So, move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak regarding this matter? Anyone in the courtroom wishing to speak regarding this matter? Any alderman wishing to speak regarding this matter?
Jimmy, Mayor?
Mr. Milton?
Joel, I seem to ask this on all of our, when we're closing roads. Does I understand that the sponsor is responsible for notifying all the businesses that'll be impacted?
That's correct.
And the sponsor of this is?
The Chamber of Commerce.
Okay, Chamber.
They have been for several years.
Okay, thank you.
Any others? Six aldermen present, six yeses. Julia King, Larry Milton, Jamie Whitis, Jeff C., Bill Skane, Bob Simmons, all vote yes. Passes. Ready to look at item number 22. Madam Clerk, please provide the introduction.
Your Honor, this is a resolution supporting a housing development by North Star Housing LLC, located at 325 Wildwood Drive, Branson, Missouri.
Have a staff report from Joe Hornicle.
Yes, Mayor, members of the board. Each year, or most years, I should say, the Missouri Housing Development Commission gives developers the opportunity for some funding to help cities acquire additional affordable housing. You may recall that this group provided a similar presentation last year in their effort to try and get funding. They came up just shy last year, so they're back again this year to make the similar request. Mr. Andrew Danner is here this evening to give a presentation to you all and asking for your support.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the board. Does this still work like last year?
Andrew, for the record, if you would.
Yes, Andrew Danner, 5775 Northwest 64th Street, Kansas City, Missouri. But I did grow up down here. My mom and brother still live down here, and some of you may know them or may not. I appreciate the time this year. I'm here to make a similar request as we did last year. Not really much has changed. We got good feedback from the Missouri Housing Development Commission, and now that they have more funding, now that the state low-income housing tax credits are available, we hope we can garner some funding here. I'll run you very quickly through a few of these. Our location is in a great walkable score area to jobs, opportunities, and other means if they don't have reliable transportation, per se. So, we think our location and the surrounding amenities, along with the surrounding uses, is very complimentary for the townhome structures that we plan on building, 40 of them. The streets and roads, we're about 85, 90% with streets, roads, utilities, everything in it. We really just need a top coat of asphalt, and the sanitary lines run to the trunk line. So, as far as getting the development off the ground and in place or in service sooner than most, I think we're at an added, added advantage to most. Just some renderings of the units. We have two and three bedrooms, so it's focused on families. We're working with the OCAC, it was our community action agency, to do our supportive services for the development. I've previously done a development down here with Developmental Connections, and when Mr. Max Lidle was part of Developmental Connections, we did 100% special needs up on East 76 over by, over there by their facility. So, this won't be our first project down here. We're excited to come back. Hopefully, we, we can get the funding and the support of the city council also. Just some of the unit sizes and bedrooms. As far as our rents will go, our rents will be for the two bedrooms, the 30% rent AMI around $310, all the way up, for the two bedrooms, all the way up to the 60s at $495. And then our three bedrooms at 30% AMIs will be around $355, where our three bedrooms at 60% will be around $694. The project's estimated to be somewhere around $7 million total, and we'll have a clubhouse and supportive services within the clubhouse, along with a full-time onsite manager and maintenance provider there. So, and it's split 50/50, two bedrooms, three bedrooms. If you have any questions, comments, I'm happy to answer any of them. I appreciate it.
Let me get it on the floor, Andrew, and then we will, we'll have the aldermen, we'll get it on the floor to do so. Do I have a motion approving this resolution?
So, move.
Second.
Seconds here, all right. Anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak regarding this matter? Anyone in the courtroom audience wishing to speak? Any alderman wishing to speak?
Yes, sir, I have a question. The issue of funding, sorry, it's all covered up, that's okay. It's approximately $7 million, and it wasn't funded last year, for what reason? Just refresh.
They just didn't have enough funds, and they, different projects and scoring. Last year, they only had federal credits, and so this year, they had, they have federal and state credits, so we're hoping that the increase in funding allows for more applications. I would say there's around 120 applications put in a year across the entire state of Missouri, and they only fund about 24, 25. So, you know, we don't take it lightly on trying to come in and, and put in a project that costs us a lot of money to put these applications together. If we didn't get good, strong feedback, we wouldn't come back for a second bite at the apple. We think the opportunity's here, we think the need is here, and we think the qualified allocation plan that the state puts out should benefit Branson the way it's written, written for their points and everything else. So, the more funding, the more opportunity, and we think it'll be.
Who deals with ongoing maintenance issues? Is that your company?
Yes, we'll be, and the management company that we'll hire.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman, say.
So, the, the four structures that are there currently, is this part of that, or how are you utilizing?
So, those are, those are five units, and right now, we have those rented out on, they'll be quote-unquote "market rate rentals."
I got you.
They're not night, they're not nightly rentals. They were originally planned on that. You've just kind of seen what happened with COVID and nightly rentals, so they have turned into, we have five individuals living there, renting them from us now, and they would be, I won't say folded in, because they're technically separate funding, but they'll be part of a overall rental, so we would have 45 units there.
Yeah, got you. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Alderman, go.
I think this question would be for Stan. Stan, I received a phone call from a local developer, and his question was, when he saw us on the agenda, his question was, I know this came up once before, and we passed it, and then it didn't go through. He's asking if this wouldn't go out for an RFP.
As far as what you're talking about, this is strictly state funding, and the city doesn't, would not issue an RFP for this building. It's not that process.
As far as the sale?
This is not the old-school property.
My mistake.
Yeah, sorry, we already own the property at 325 Wildwood Drive, over by the Tainer Outlet Mall.
Got it, thank you.
Apologize about that if I didn't make that clear.
Just for clarity, this is really the step they have to jump through to be able to go after the funding at the state level.
That's, that's correct.
They have to get the endorsement.
I was on the wrong property.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, they have to go. Any other questions? All right. Six aldermen present, six yeses. Julia King, Larry Milton, Jamie Whitis, Jeff C., Bill Skane, Bob Simmons, all vote yes. Passed, the resolution passed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Joel.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, we are now ready for item number 23. Would you please introduce this item?
Your Honor, this is the first reading, Bill number 5879, and ordinance extending ordinance 2020-0072 to combat the community spread of COVID-19.
Begin with a staff report from Chris Lebec.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board. We're here before you again to ask for an extension to the face-covering ordinance that this board passed a few months ago. We're going to have a brief presentation by me. I'm going to move into some medical testimony today by both Mercy and Cox, but I want to kind of level-set where we are right now in the nation. To start off, the current CDC position has not changed. Dr. Robert Redfield, during testimony, the U.S. Senate Appropriations Subcommittee on September 16th made the following statement regarding face coverings. He said, "We have clear scientific evidence, they work, and they are our best defense." He even went so far to say, "I might even go so far as to say that this face mask is more guaranteed to protect me against COVID than when I take a COVID vaccine." So, that's the current position of the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. As far as the United States position, where does Missouri stand? What you see on the left side is a snapshot from the, or the Federal Coronavirus Task Force national picture. It shows where all the states lie in representation to everybody else. We're looking at new cases per 100,000. In September 20th, Missouri was fifth. We moved to eighth on the 27th, 11th, and now 15th as of the most latest, as of the latest report. So, our new cases per 100,000 on a state level are going down relative to other states in the country. Okay, same thing for lab test positivity. We're looking at the same picture here. That's kind of remained stable. What is this? This is the number of positive cases, or positive tests per lab. All right, and again, just to break down, the key thing to look at here is we are still in the red zone for number of cases per 100,000. We're still in the, what's the feds call, the orange zone for lab test positivity. So, this is our position as a state relative to the rest of the nation. So, what are we asking for the board to do today? We're asking for the board, staff is recommending that we look at extending the face-covering ordinance and extending it for an indefinite period, and I'm going to explain why here in a minute, why that is in our position, the best option going forward, okay? Right now, as a nation, we are working through what we call pandemic stage five, the spread of this coronavirus throughout the United States. The goal that we're working towards is we want to try to move towards stage six, which is recovery and preparation for potential subsequent waves. Throughout this, it's very important to keep the end in mind. What is the end to this? Where is the endgame lie? And that end lies with a vaccine, and that's a vaccine that's readily available for all the citizens of Branson who desire to take the inoculation. So, that's the endgame. That's what gets us out of this situation ultimately. So, for the time being, face coverings, along with good hygiene and social distancing, unfortunately, are the new normal for the United States, and they are helping us right now lead normal lives relative to a full lockdown. So, we need to look at this from that perspective, that this is what we have to do until we get to that endpoint when there is a vaccine. So, why are we looking at it from the standpoint of an indefinite date? Because by not setting an expiration date, we're giving you the maximum amount of flexibility to pivot, okay? Not only the Board of Aldermen, the mayor, but also the staff. Whereas if we were to pick today the date 30 days out, or 60 days out, or 45 days out, whatever that date is, we're just throwing a dart at a board, because there's no logic or rational reason behind that picking of a date, okay? So, how can we do this? How can we be in a position, let's say, 30 days from now, or 45 days from now, if we are out of this, and there's a vaccine, and we're ready to lift this ordinance? Well, there's a couple tools in the Branson Municipal Code I want to walk through that not all the board members may be aware of, okay? The first is it's not just staff that can stand before this board and present ordinances and resolutions. Section 2-79 of our municipal code says that all proposed ordinances, resolutions, and other matters or subjects requiring action by the board shall be introduced and sponsored by a member of the board or the mayor. So, besides the city administrator, myself, and department directors, you all can present a proposed ordinance or resolution to the board as well. So, again, you have that vehicle, you have that ability. Now, when can that be done? It's a couple different situations, scenarios. The first is a special meeting. So, let's say there is some new breakthrough two weeks from now, or 60 days from now. Two members of the board, or the mayor on his own, can call for a special meeting, okay? That special meeting would require a quorum. Of course, it would be contingent on all the members to be present, but it could be called. So, you have that ability as two aldermen standing together, or as the mayor. Additionally, don't lose sight of the fact that we have existing regular meetings in the city. We have two per month, first and the third Tuesday of every month. So, between now and the end of the year, if my count's right, we have about six meetings leading up to the end of the year. So, again, there's another opportunity, if we need to lift this, to present this, to bring this up, okay? So, where I want to go from here, I just wanted to give you the backdrop of where we are statewide relative to the United States, current federal position, and what your ability is as alderman and as the mayor with regards to our recommendation. I want to pivot over to Mercy and Cox Health. We have representatives today from both of them. We're going to first start with Dr. Barbie. He's been gracious to come down here today and give some insight to the board into what we are dealing with today, so I'm going to turn it over to him. Thank you, doctor.
We really appreciate the invitation to be here to present some information to you. I will tell you, I'm not going to do a deep dive technical presentation, going to keep it at a high level, very understandable, conceptual, that is all backed up by a pretty substantial base of science. As Mr. Lebec said, we are kind of leveling out at the state level. We've had 144,000 cases, 2,400 deaths. That is about a 1.7% death rate in the state of Missouri for positive, known positive cases. About 7% of all the tests that are done. that are done in the state come back positive, which is a little bit higher than the U.S. average of about 5%. Here in Taney County, you can see the numbers there at the bottom. And we talk about how many cases per 100,000. You can see at the top in the state, there's 2,350 cases per 100,000 population. In Taney County, there's 2,600 per 100,000. So we're a little higher than the state average down here. The other thing I'd like to point out is you can see that the cases in the state peaked in the summer months as, you know, businesses opened again, the schools began to come back into session, and is climbing slightly, but has leveled out. I want to point out what happened here in Taney County. And I cannot tell you that this was a direct result of your masking ordinance, but look at the timeframe in which your cases were going up very steeply and very rapidly. And shortly after the passage, they peaked, and then they came down very sharply as well. That did not mirror the total state experience, which you can see at the top of that slide. Pass that one. Taney County has the 20 highest, 20th highest total number of cases in the state out of 114 counties in the city of St. Louis. You're 20th in the state. You're 27th in terms of the number of cases per 100,000 out of those 114 counties in the city of St. Louis. So the issue of masking, should we wear a mask? You know, there's, this is probably the, one of the most controversial issues out there now, certainly as it regards to public health. There are some people that maybe don't take it quite seriously enough, and there are some people that really go overboard. And I think, you know, I hope that a rational approach is somewhere in the middle. And I think it's, it should be self-evident that the whole conversation around is our adequate PPE, personal protective equipment, for healthcare workers. That was the first thing on our agenda when this first hit back in late January, early February. And it is critical. And you can see that considering the intense exposure that health workers have that deal with COVID cases, their incidence of contracting COVID is actually very low, not much different than the general population. So protective equipment does work.
If you're in the audience, please wear your mask properly.
So the bottom line is that the preponderance of evidence, and I would say the vast preponderance of evidence, supports the effectiveness of masks. Can you find studies out there that question it, or that have a contrary finding? Yes, you can. That is true for almost any health condition or treatment. But the vast preponderance of evidence across a variety of studies shows effectiveness. The mask type can make a difference. I'm going to show you that in a minute. But essentially, all masks provide some element of protection. And they are effective both at reducing the droplet spread, meaning me projecting COVID particles out into the atmosphere, if you will, and they also do protect the wearer. We inhale fewer particles when we're wearing a mask, and that's important. I'm going to show you in a minute. And I think one of the most important things, I'm going to come back around this again at the end, and that is, it takes all of us being concerned about one another to reduce the incidence of this illness and the deaths that result from it, and the economic impact that it has produced for this community and many others around the country, as well as the education of our students. We have to do what we can to help one another cope through this crisis in the best way. I'm going to give you very briefly four evidences of benefits of masking, and how we know this. Some of these studies are just lab studies. They're done in the laboratory under controlled conditions, and they demonstrate that masks reduce droplet spread. There are observational studies. That means when a masking ordinance goes into place in a community or in a statewide, what happens to the incidence in that state? The third is a case study. Is there a specific example of a, of a situation in which we knew COVID existed and that it didn't transmit, and that is directly related to the use of masking? And then the fourth is what, and I think this is very important, and I will end with this in a couple of slides, and that is, how severe is the disease in the individuals that get exposed? And I'll give away part of the story. The severity of the disease is in part proportional to the amount of virus you inhale in. And if you inhale in less virus particles, the likelihood that your, your disease will be less severe is significantly improved. So, that said, this is a study done at Duke recently, looking at a lot of different masks. Not everyone is going to have a grade-two surgical mask or an N95 mask. We make them out of mini materials. And they looked at a number of materials in controlled circumstances to say, how effective are these masks in preventing droplet spread? And the bottom line is on the right-hand side there, and you can see almost all of those masks substantially reduced the droplet spread compared to no mask. So it's pretty easy to measure how many droplet particles get beyond the mask. And they did this, and it's, I think, pretty persuasive. Observational studies. There have been 15 states so far that have passed statewide masking. They looked at the incidents before and the incidents after in aggregate across all 15 states. So it wasn't just one community, wasn't 10,000 people here, 100,000 people there, 15 states. And when they put that together and kind of munched it around, you can see the incidents beforehand, then as a masking ordinance was passed, what happened to the incidents after that? It dropped about 2% per week. And it can, although this only shows three or four weeks, that incidence continues out beyond that. So it's pretty effective, you know, if you just measure the incidence in the community, and you've got all the other variables, you've got social distancing, you have, you know, are the businesses opening, are the restaurants opening? Irrespective of all of that, you get a significant decrease when universal or high levels of masking are proposed. That's an observation. Case study, right here near River City, if you will, Springfield, Missouri. This case has been cited over and over and over again in the national medical literature. There was a, at Great Clips in Springfield, two of the stylists had COVID, but every, they wore masks. They didn't know it at the time, of course. They wore masks, and all of their customers wore masks. They cut the hair and did the, did the hair of 139 customers, none of which got COVID. And you know what the, you know, arrangement is in this salon. You're right there by the stylist, you're there for some length of time. You know, we talk about six feet and 15 minutes. That certainly is exceeded by the stylist. None of them got it, and they all were wearing masks. That's a case study that is very persuasive with regard to transmission. And the last that I'll say, and I mentioned this earlier, there are several very convincing studies that show the fewer viral particles you inhale, the less severe your disease is likely to be. And it is about a twofold change. You are about half as likely to get severe disease if you're wearing a mask. Now, this is important in the sense that it would be nice if we could get through this pandemic with fewer people dead. That would be nice. Fewer people sick, as even, is nice too, but we're trying to limit severe illness and death. So if we can, if people are going to get it, if we can make a way for them to have a less severe or asymptomatic case of the disease, that's a good thing. And in fact, those people get it, they don't have many symptoms, they get over it in a week or so, and go on about their business, and they are immune, as far as we know now. You've heard this whole discussion about herd immunity. How do we get enough people that are immune in the communities that the overall spread slows way down? It's the concept around vaccines like polio, and measles, and mumps, and rubella. You vaccinate a lot of people, they're all immune. You get one case in a community, it doesn't spread all over the community because everybody's immune. That's herd immunity. You get that two ways. You either get it through people contracting the illness naturally, or you get it by vaccination. We don't have a vaccine yet. We may later, but we don't have it now. So in the meantime, the more people, and I'm not saying we should infect a bunch of people, but we, people who get a mild case of the disease then begin, then get immune, and we begin to increase the number of immune individuals in our communities. So in summary, as I said, the vast preponderance of evidence across a variety of studies in a variety of settings show that masks reduce the transition of, transmission of the virus particles, and thereby reducing the number and the severity of cases of illness that occur in a population. They reduce droplet spread, and they protect you. And as I said, you know, I, I could live in St. Louis, I could live in Kansas City, I could live in Chicago. I choose to live in the Ozarks. Because we care about one another here in the Ozarks. That's our hallmark, that's our trademark. We need to be concerned about one another. And in my opinion, both as a physician and as a concerned individual, human being, a colleague of yours, I think we should be willing, willing, not made, but willing to inconvenience ourselves a little in order to reduce the spread and severity, and in particular, to protect those who are most vulnerable. I appreciate the time. I'll turn it to Dr. Art Hale, Mercy Clinic Branson, for our closing comments.
I have some articles that I'll leave with you for reading. Thanks, Dave. So yes, my clinic is right here in Branson. So, you know, in the last three weeks, we've seen a significant change. It's definitely been different. Now, we see people who are impacted either by family or friends. And so we've seen a kind of a change in attitude. There's rarely, rarely a day or two that we don't go by with one of our patients we've heard who's gravely ill, sick or dying. In fact, on the way here, we lost a patient. In fact, one of my friend's father. So it's something that now people are starting to feel, and they're starting to see it. And it's been a big change. We missed the first wave here in Branson, and so now we're hitting it, unfortunately, at the same time that we're going to start seeing the colds, the strep throats, the flu, and everything like that. I think the people, and my patients are receptive now. They've actually been very supportive of the mask. They're comfortable with them. They're glad that Branson did do it. They feel safer. They go out and do more in the community. It's helped the economy, I think, do better with this comfort level. And so if you talk to patients, I think 90% of them are all behind you for this. There's a 10% that I don't think we'll ever get to. And that's just the nature of everything. So we do support the mask. We hope that they will continue it until we can get through this pandemic. And thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I now have Mr. Mahoney from Cox Health.
Thank you, doctors. William Mahoney, hospital administrator. I'm not a doctor. People call me Doc. I think they remind me when I was a kid playing basketball, I used to think I was Dr. J. So that's how my ego takes that. My role as a hospital administrator I see is twofold. Protect the mission and vision, which our mission is to improve the health communities we serve. Our vision is to be the best for those who need us. And that's kind of the lens that I'm looking at. And then is to make sure that I take care of our people so they can take care of the patients, be it our medical staff, our nurses, our biomedical people, our even people in the cafeteria, or accountants. First, I want to acknowledge that I know that this pandemic has caused people anxiety, heartache, and economic distress. It's not a funny thing. This is a real hard thing for people to deal with. I do want to thank all of you, city council. Mayor, thank you for being here. Alderwoman King, nice to see you. And then Aldermen, also nice to see you. And I appreciate the service you all give to our community. Your past actions, although very difficult, I know have strengthened our team's resolve. Feel like we have someone on our side helping us. And it has limited the number of COVID-19 cases in our community. Your actions actually, in my mind, have been heroic. I am glad you continue not to be myopic on this topic. Considering you're, we are only one of three communities in our region, be it Forsyth, Springfield, Branson, that have a masking ordinance. And you continue to support this despite pushback from others. There are approximately 1 million people in the south-central region of Missouri here, and only 175,000 are under a masking ordinance. Your resolve, again, is making a difference. Now, a question that I often ponder, if things can't be perfect, how can they be better? Until we have a vaccine, we know we can't get to perfect, or close to even perfect. Your continued passing of a masking ordinance really does help to make things better. You saw a presentation here, you'll see one from Dr., by Dr. Barb, excuse me, and Dr. Osier here in a few minutes, and Dr. Hale, that showed you the, the data shows that masking works. Our local data shows it curtails the spread of COVID. It is the best thing we can do, along with physically distancing. I'm a big pusher of physical distancing, not socially distancing. We have elderly, we have a lot of volunteers at the hospital, and no one reaching out to them, and that connection is very hard on people's health mentally. I, I push that, you know, wash your hands, wear your mask, and physically distance. But please try to keep in contact with people. That's good for their, their soul. And nobody wants to be left out lonely during this pandemic. Now, I want to give you an inside look at our hospital, and communicate the challenges we are having despite the masking ordinance. I couldn't imagine openly how overwhelmed we would be at the hospital and in local clinics if you hadn't made the previous two moves on the ordinance. We have a general medical unit with 21 beds. It's generally pretty full. We have a critical care unit with 20 beds. Most of the time, it's been full. At the end of this month, six of those 20 beds, we will have as negative pressure rooms. So we will be able to keep COVID patients here. Not all, but those that aren't as severe, and not have to send them up to Springfield where there's a lot more resources. We have 24 step-down beds after critical care. You usually go to a step-down, and that's just been full all the time. Rehab unit with 13 beds for people needing rehab, that's decently full. 14 mental health beds, those have been pretty full. Our ED, emergency department, has 28 beds and five rapid treatment beds. Our emergency department treats 42,000 people a year. Generally speaking, EDs around the country, emergency departments are down about 10%. What I'm seeing in the literature, people are scared to go there because of COVID. This means we are at full capacity, or excuse me, I'm just getting one part here. We've had some pretty dramatic spikes recently. On Sunday night, I, I get a text, seems like all the time, about what's going on. We had 20 people boarding in our emergency department, meaning there was no beds to put them in. And the emergency department's not set up for long stays. Excuse me there. And the other thing is, so we made phone calls around. And in the month of October, two or three times, we've had to call over 200 miles, find a bed to send a patient to. That, that's a lot of time. That's calling, nope, we don't have a bed, nope, we don't have a bed. And sometimes it's the severity. You know, you have a brain bleed, you can't, we don't take care of those. We go to bigger places with neurosurgeons, and those are all full. So what does this mean to the public? Overwhelmingly, the hospitals means people who are treated with non-COVID illnesses still can have their care delayed. While masks aren't perfect, they help. If they only work 50% of the time, that's 50% of the patients who aren't taking up a bed. If young, healthy people have a car wreck, or a person has a heart attack, they could have to be transferred far away because we don't have beds or staff available. And staff, they can get ill. Their families can get ill. I hope the schools don't send all the kids home, because 90% of my workforce is female. I would say 70% of that, 90%, have children who are younger, can't take care of themselves. And now we have a dilemma. They don't have the daycare or the school, and they've got that with what's going on with their family. We are in, if we go to the first week of March, the week 31 of treating our pandemic in our community. As a 24/7/365 business, we, we just can't shut the door. There have been no breaks over the last 31 weeks. It's starting to wear on people. They're being stressed out. One point I think I need to stress, and it, it upsets me greatly, is the amount of violence people are having towards our staff. Walking in and spitting in their face, ma'am or sir, could you please wear a mask, punching them. That's not what we should be doing. We should be caring for each other. You know, violence is, in the last five months, is up over 200%. That's just, that's not right. We, we, these are people who want to care for you. And if we, if we were a lot more overwhelmed because you didn't pass the mask, it'd be worse than that. And, and our people know that. And our people know that. And I think about this, majority of those are female workers, those are mothers, daughters, wives. That just isn't, that's not right anywhere, especially where we live. It is extremely humbling to see the sacrifices our people are making because they care. Your continuing to pass this masking ordinance helps us not to be overwhelmed. Again, thank you for looking out for our community good. Your past efforts have helped us tremendously. In future years, history will show that the masking ordinance greatly benefited those you serve. And I ask God to bless all of us, bless you. And I pray that our prayers would be to be able to see something come quicker than a year on a vaccine so that people don't have to have high anxiety, we can have less suffering. So thank you for your time.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, our final speaker today on behalf of the city is going to be Dr. Osri from Cox Health.
Mayor Kirz, Alderman, thank you again for inviting me to come speak to you on this topic. I do not plan on diving deep into the topics that Dr. Hale and Dr. Barb and Mr. Mahoney discussed, kind of want to build on that and move forward. As Dr. Hale and Dr. Barb mentioned, the evidence for masking continues to move in favor of that being an effective way to reduce the transmission of this virus and to reduce the severity of the virus, or the severity of the illness if you get the virus. The overwhelming advice grounded in science continues to be, wear a mask, maintain social distance and wash your hands. We have discussed this at previous Board of Aldermen meetings and I think that that's been a consistent message from the healthcare community throughout this. As we look at the hospitals, we look at the healthcare system, caring for COVID patients in our hospitals takes away resources from other patients. And it does that in a number of ways. One of those is COVID patients physically take up beds in a hospital. So as of yesterday, and the numbers, most recent numbers I have are yesterday, there were 168 hospitalized patients, so patients sick enough to be in the hospital with COVID between the two facilities in Springfield. They physically displace other people. There's nowhere to put the trauma patients, there's no ICU beds left, there's no medical surgical beds left. So the patients board in the emergency department and the emergency department either goes on divert and sends those patients to another town or they do what's called forced open, where we, Mercy will take a bed, or an ambulance, then Cox will take an ambulance, then Mercy will take an ambulance back and forth. In addition to physically taking up space in the hospital, COVID patients are increasingly, are, excuse me, exceedingly resource intensive. So they require more nursing support, more therapy support, more respiratory support than an average patient. In addition to that, the significant, or they need significantly more personal protective equipment for our staff and for the patients. Nursing is incredibly tight, limited supply, providers are limited supply and we're trying to spread those as evenly across all specialties as possible. When we look at those patients, those 168 patients that are in Springfield, we look at where they come from, what counties they come from, what communities they live in. August 1st, when we went back and started this masking mandate, it was not uncommon for 16 or 17 of the patients in our Cox South COVID ward to be from Tanney County. Fast forward to today, that's five. A significant percentage wise, less patients are coming from this county. Now we're seeing spikes out of all the counties around us that don't have masking ordinance, as Christian County, Stone County, Webster County are the counties we follow on a day to day basis. As Mr. Mahoney mentioned, the regional hospitals, including Cox Medical Center Branson, Cox South and Mercy Hospital in Springfield, have been inundated with patients, not just COVID, but other patients as well. This has caused patients from our area to be transferred even further away. As Mr. Mahoney mentioned, patients coming in needing neurosurgical care, they will likely not stay in the state of Missouri. They will likely leave this state as we try to find facilities that are open to take them. As I stand here today, Cox Medical Center Branson's on full critical care and emergency room divert. That means if you have a medical emergency right now sitting in this room, the ambulance is going to come pick you up and they're going to take you to a community, not this one. They're going to drive past your hospital, likely going to Springfield, to two hospitals that are already overwhelmed. And it really takes patients out of their community to far places. If our ER is open and our critical care is unable to take patients, we will then liflight you to another hospital, potentially 200, 300 miles away. As we look forward, as we look to the next 30, 60, 90, 120 days, the questions that we should be thinking about is how do we plan for our winter respiratory season with the flu and with the coronavirus? These questions we're trying to figure out are, they range from the obvious, where are we going to put these patients? Where are we going to physically find beds in our facilities to put these patients? Down to the minute details like, we don't have enough swabs to swab enough people to run the test on them for flu and for COVID coming in this fall. Where are we going to get that supply? The ones that we do get tested, the pipettes, the actual pipette tips we use to run the test in the lab, we don't have enough of those. And there's no manufacturer that's got a supply of those. As we look to mitigate some of that, we partner with Tanney County Health Department, Missouri National Guard, Branson Office of Emergency Management to bring in the National Guard every Wednesday, starting the 20th of this month through the end of the year, to do surge testing, to help use other people's resources to get those tests done in our community. Why does that relevant to this discussion? And we know that wearing masks makes fewer people sick and the people that do get sick become less sick. That saves all those resources we need for everybody else. Alderman, I've been asked, how long do we need a mask for? Alderman Milton, I believe you brought this up the last couple of sessions. There's not a magic metric. There's not a graph that says today is the day we can take the mask off. There's not a prevalence rate or a positivity rate, as I would like to say there would be, but there isn't. This is a mitigation strategy. Masks are an attempt to buy us time to reduce the number of people who get sick and to reduce the severity of the people who get sick until we have a vaccine or an effective cure slash treatment. And at that point, when we have those other mitigation strategies, then it is safe to remove the masking mandate. And with that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions from you guys.
Doctor, I thought you would have a screen seat, but would you identify yourself?
Oh, sorry, I apologize. Sean Osri, Chief Medical Officer, Cox Medical Center, Branson.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, that's all we have on behalf of the city of Branson. City Clerk Westfall is going to be passing around Dr. Barbie's article that he wants to share with the board regarding the effectiveness of masking, a recent study. And all in there. Thank you.
We've heard the report from Chris Lebeck and the professional experts he's had come in to share with us. You've heard the first reading of Bill 58, 79. Do I have a motion approving this?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak? And these are the guidelines. Three minutes, need to be a citizen of Branson, Branson taxpayer.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Yes.
Before we go to the citizens, do we have an opportunity to ask the speakers any questions?
Well, we can, they're still here. You want the citizens, you want to wait, have the citizens wait? Okay.
Well, I'd just like to ask a few questions.
All right. Alderman Milton would like to ask some of you to come back to the microphone.
I hear what you're saying. I agree with a lot of what you say. I just, I'll tell you, I need some help from either one of the doctors or Mr. Mahoney. Dr. Mahoney. Why is it? I hear what you're saying. Have you give the same information to Nixa, Ozark, Joplin, any of those other communities? Have you given this presentation?
I can say my hospital is based here and that's why I'm speaking here. Dr. Osri is our chief medical officer of this hospital and that's the community. Yeah, there are people in those communities. I like Dr. Chapman, he's a fellow of the CIO, he's a fellow of the CIO, but he doesn't know where my hospital is located. He's here and I'm in charge.
Okay. Because my point is, and where I'm stuck, is there are all these other communities that you would think would be getting the same information and I am just dumbfounded that Joplin at one time was a crisis or high risk or something. They've reversed their mask mandate. So this board must be smarter than Joplin, Nixa, Ozark, Lake of the Ozarks, all these other communities. We just must, I don't know if we're divine, that we just know more and better.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I have Dr. Barbie speak to that point? That's why, one of the reasons why he's here, because he has some experience outside of specifically the Branson community and he can maybe lend some insight, given his extensive experience in the field.
And I do realize that I didn't introduce myself in the beginning and I apologize for that. I'm Dr. David Barb. I live and have my clinical practice in Mountain Grove. I am vice president of primary care for Mercy, oversee a large geographic area, primary care practices in Springfield and in our regional practices. Also past president of the Missouri State Medical Association, past president of the American Medical Association and president-elect of the World Medical Association. Through those connections, universally, across every specialty and every jurisdiction, the medical community strongly supports masking. We provide information mostly through local physicians and local hospitals to those communities that want that information, who want to be informed of the science. I presented recently to the Mountain Grove School Board as they were considering what to do and how to handle it. And I'm embarrassed to say that they have not chosen to do masking, yet Ava, a smaller town than Mountain Grove, just down the road in Douglas County, is masking. So I think it is courage and I think it is understanding and information that allow groups like yours to make the decision that you have made.
Okay. Before you leave, is there a reason why our Tanney County Health Department puts a written proclamation that after discussion, should we recommend masks or mandate masks, our Tanney County Health Department recommends masks? Have you talked to Tanney County Health and given all of them this information?
State and county health departments by and large don't generate their own research and data. They rely on those of national organizations, predominantly in this case, the CDC. So it kind of comes down, the Missouri State Department of, Division of Health and Senior Services and Dr. Williams, who's the head of that, pretty much follow those guidelines.
So what I heard you say, just so I'm clear, Tanney County Health Department listens to the CDC and the Tanney County Health Department has recommended to Tanney County in a proclamation recommending masks, not mandating masks. Am I off on that?
I don't know what their policy is.
It's a written proclamation. You bet. Hi, Lisa.
Hi, so I'm Lisa Marshall. I'm the director of the Tanney County Health Department. And of course, our board has the proclamation that we passed earlier in the summer. We do recommend and highly encourage our community to wear face coverings because we know they work. Our board also has submitted a letter of support for the extension of this ordinance. I emailed that out earlier this week, so we do support it. We do not have the jurisdictional authority to do that for our entire county at this point in time.
Okay, but in fairness, and I'm not beating you up because I like you, but you haven't been to the Tanney County Commissioners and asked them to mandate masks countywide based on all this information?
So we do provide them with information and we have had multiple conversations. I cannot speak to why they do choose not to, but I can say we have informed them on our stance on that and they're aware that we do support face coverings and think that that would be an effective mitigation strategy for our county.
Okay, so you have presented to the Tanney County Commissioners that you would recommend mandating masks countywide and they have chosen not to.
So we have had conversations, we've not had a formal presentation there, but they are aware of our stance that we support face coverings for our county.
Okay, in fairness, do you see where I'm coming from? I mean, I'm really struggling with that.
And I can't speak for our commission, but I can tell you what our board does support and they are supportive of an extension of this ordinance. And just kind of from the information that I had sent out last week, what we are seeing is that since this face covering ordinance was passed back in late July, we have seen that our new cases are not coming at the highest level of the previous peaks and they're also shorter in duration. So from a numbers standpoint and from what we're seeing anecdotally, you know, our caseload is becoming more manageable. It is still a great deal of work and a great workload that our staff are dealing with at this point in time, but it is becoming a lesser, and we could talk about the number of new cases that we are seeing on a daily basis.
Well, I think I want to ask somebody else and not you because I get scolded for picking on you and I don't mean to.
Mr. Milton, excuse me just a moment. Our focus is on Branson. We're the Board of Aldermen for Branson. We can't speak or guess why other communities don't do or do. So I'm hopeful what we can do is focus on what we can do for our community.
With all due respect, Mayor, I'm an elected official. I'm an elected Alderman on this board. I think I have the right to ask questions and try to understand this and I don't know, I just don't agree, I don't understand why you keep interrupting me.
Sir, I gave you permission to get ahead of our normal process, to speak before the people did.
Yeah.
I gave you permission for that.
Are you taking that away?
No.
Okay.
Asking you to consider the fact that we represent the city of Branson. You represent a ward, a ward in the city of Branson.
Are you through? Because I'd like to continue. Thank you, Lisa, I don't want to ask you anymore. Is Dr. Hale still here?
Thank you.
Oh.
Yes.
Dr. Hale, you made a couple of comments that I just questioned. I believe you said that, and I'm not sure what the reference was, but you said 90% of the people, I'm not sure which people, I don't know if it was Branson people or somewhere else, support masks?
My patients.
I'm sorry?
My patients.
Okay.
Not the general public, I don't know what the percentage.
Okay. Because I've kept, I quit keeping count. My last count was 68% of those that I've talked to are not supportive of the mask mandate. So when I heard you say 90%, and so it must be your patients also that made the statement that they're glad Branson mandated masks.
There are a lot of patients who are very happy, yes.
Okay.
They feel like it's safer.
Is it fair to say that there's possibly a lot of Branson residents that don't support the mandate?
Oh, yeah. We talk to them every day.
Okay. And I'm not sure who this goes to, but we'll see. I keep hearing about August 1st is when we, when this board approved the mask mandate and what the results have been since this magical day of August 1st. Our numbers have been declining, I think I'm told, since August 1st. The number, there's an old saying about liars, excuse me, not liars, figures and analysts and statisticians. In June and July, the number of people in Branson, and I don't know what the exact number is, Mayor, but- is, Mayor, but I'm going to suggest to you, in the months of August and September, the number of people that are here is probably 50, 60% of the number that's here in June and July. So we're in a tourist environment, so I don't, I guess I'm just not convinced yet that the August 1st mandate that mask, look how well it's done. We've had half the people in our community during that time. Would that be a fair statement?
Yeah, but I think that a lot of the clinics don't see the tourists. I mean, we're going by what we see.
But the tourists would be infecting the locals.
Sure.
Okay, so there's less tourists infecting, I mean, less tourists, so they're not infecting as much. I think has a, maybe more of an impact on that August 1st date.
But you saw that in the, the numbers of cases went actually down for a while after the mask mandate, and now they're...
So did the people, but the people left.
It's hard to say with...
I can tell you, in August, the people left. I'm just saying.
Yeah.
Okay. Our state, and I know I'm getting out of Missouri, but our state governor, he must have the highest level of resources than any of us local communities, and for some reason, he doesn't, I thought he would. For some reason, he hasn't determined that mandating masks is as important as this board is hearing. Is that fair?
Yes, he's also not a physician.
There is not a physician sitting on this board. There's not one physician sitting up here. We're listening to physicians. I would think Governor Parsons would be listening to physicians.
Many factors involved. I mean, we know politics is involved.
There's no politics up here.
Zero.
Mr. Mayor, can I address that question by Alderman Milton? Just so there's some clarity there. As you have heard during our last session with regards to the mask mandate, some of you may recall this, the governor has made it abundantly clear that this should be a local decision and not a statewide decision. That's why unfortunately, we are here before you with this request. So that's why you don't see something at the state level. It's not that the governor has a position one way or another. He thinks, and he has made it abundantly clear during his daily press briefings, that this is a local decision for each municipality, each county, each commission.
Chris, I'm not, yeah, never mind. I believe it was Ms., no, Dr. Usery, said that there's not enough swabs at our hospitals, right?
So as we look at our stockpiles of these things, like swabs and pipette tips and these types of things, we look back at what we used previous years. So normal flu season, we'll use, let's say, 5,000 nasal pharyngeal swabs. When you look at that number, a month into flu season, we stop testing because we know it's flu, right? You walk in, you got fever, chills, aches, cough, sore throat, it's the flu, you get your Tamiflu, you go on. We don't, we stop swabbing. In a world where we don't know that it's flu, in a world where it could potentially be COVID, we can't stop swabbing. In many cases, in some of these outlying areas, we're going to be using two swabs because it tests the way the, it's two separate tests. So you're going to burn more. And we would anticipate a multiple of what we have used in the past, and to be real honest with you, sir, everybody in the country is trying to get their hands on them. Pipette tips, again, is one of those things we don't have a supply of. Like, we're trying to find some in Finland right now. It is really, that's the issues with our supply chains. Historically, we've been just in time, right? I get just what I need, just as I need it, to be lean and efficient. In a environment that we're currently in, that doesn't work anymore. We've got to be reliant on ourselves and our own stockpiles, and there are significant questions to whether or not we're going to make that.
Well, that's troubling.
Yes, sir.
So the CARES Act, or the governor, the president, we just, so is, I need, I'll stay in Branson, so our, our local area, it troubles me that we're six months into this, and we don't have enough swabs.
Yeah, I would agree, and I would tell you that many people on the healthcare side lose sleep at night over that. Absolutely.
Thank you for sharing that. I didn't know that.
Mr. Mayor, do we have a voice still there? Does that count? Four or three minutes? I'm sorry, sir. We can't speak from the audience. It has to be a followed procedure where we've got names and stuff, so we're, we're in the middle of his conversation. We're going to open it up for you to be able to speak in a minute, Mr. Milton still has the floor. We'll open it up.
I know the, I know COVID is serious. I know it's a pandemic, but I'm questioning the balance of, if it was from the pure medical standpoint and nothing to do with anything else, I would assume the medical community would say, let's stop this COVID, everybody stay in your house for two weeks or 30 days, whatever it is, and then COVID would go away. Is that fair? No? Maybe?
Well, he tried that, didn't he?
I mean, if you talk to the WHO, they say do not close down economies, do not close down countries, do not close down the travel, because it's devastating on countries as well as counties and cities.
Okay.
So they say, do smart stuff, wear a mask, wash your hands, and do a lot of tests.
Okay, so I guess we're all given different information, because the information that I'm giving, given loudly from our businesses and who employ our residents, is that they're drowning. And I know a lot of that obviously is COVID-related. What I'm hearing is the mandating of the masks is causing more economic pain. The governor of Indiana, just today, Mayor, this is from Wave News, he had...
Mr. Milton, please, we're talking about the city of Branson and our circumstances here.
Are you through? Because I would like to continue.
Please, so can you state...
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to call for decorum here. This is starting to get out of control.
Sorry, you...
If you have something for us to discuss about the city of Branson...
I want to give another...
...this particular resolution.
I do.
Then do so.
Just another example. Governor of Indiana, just yesterday, he reported that last Friday, they had their single highest number of cases since this all started. Their positivity rate stands at 9.4%. He has made the decision, on this Wave News report, he's made the decision to open up all the businesses, restaurants, the bars, because his statement is, because if our economy goes in the tank, then we can't help those people that are in need. He says there needs to be a balance of protecting the public health and the economy. So I'm, that's a concern I have in Branson, is I'm trying to find some balance of being responsible and doing what's responsible, but not crippling our businesses. And I know I heard the emotion from your side, let me just share emotion from my side. I've heard from several business owners, had businesses in this town for 15, 20 years, crying, crying, talking to me, telling me they're shutting down their business, they have 60, 80 employees, all of those employees now don't have a job, and this was a career for this family, and they're shutting their doors. I hear that, I feel that, it hurts. So I think there's two sides to some balance here. Any response?
So I want to make it really clear, really clear. I am not here to debate the board. I'm here to present evidence that you can use to make a decision. My observation about your last comments suggests a connection between crippling the economy and wearing masks that doesn't medically exist. I don't think it economically exists. People don't open or close businesses based on whether or not there's a mask. In fact, you could keep more businesses open safely with more masking. So I think the question you pose is kind of a false...
Okay, so these hundreds of people that have talked to me, they're all just lying? They don't know any better? They're just...
I can't, I can't tell you what's...
I know, because perception is reality also, right? I'm through, Mayor, thank you.
They can speak for themselves.
Thank you.
Does it go back to the audience in that order? Can we take a break for a minute, or bathroom break?
Well, I don't want to take too much of these gentlemen's time, because I'm sure they may want to be available if people from the audience...
Still for the aldermen?
Let's do a five-minute break and be back here at 8:10. We're now going back to the council members being able to speak. Again, I ask that we limit your comments to three minutes or less, and again, please don't just repeat what everybody else has said. If you agree with someone, say I agree with him, or whatever. So I would ask you that if you're a citizen of Branson, live in Branson, or you're a Branson taxpayer, you get a tax bill that you pay, you can be involved at the podium. Otherwise, that's the only speakers we allow. So at this point in time, podium is now open for people to come up.
I'm Brian Sykes. I live at 1805 Miller Drive in Branson. I am the Republican candidate for the 156th district as state representative. Over the past eight months, Americans have seen hardship, Branson citizens have seen hardship, and most of it has been caused by government overreach and unnecessary mandates. Since sin entered the world, disease calamities, and yes, viruses, have affected billions of people. But this latest calamity, which primarily affects those with pre-existing conditions like any virus, is being fought not with science or factual data, but rather with fear driven by the news and social media. We continue coming to you with real-life data and statistics, and you, the aldermen, choose to ignore facts in favor of pushing an agenda. As Vice President Pence so eloquently stated recently, "You are entitled to your own opinion, but you're not entitled to your own facts." The difference between COVID-19 and the bird flu, H1N1, and other viruses, is that healthy people are now being forced... is that healthy people are now being forced, through coercion, to limit business activity and put ineffective masks over their faces. We are being told, as I saw up here, that this is the new normal. In reality, it is hopefully only a temporary insanity. As I've said in previous meetings, I am not anti-mask. I am anti-government control and interference. If a person decides to wear a mask, that is their right. Conversely, if they choose not to wear a mask, that is also their right. Area businesses are doing a great job encouraging tourists to be safe, and many protective measures have been put in place. Soon, though we have never cured the common cold, a vaccine will be released as a cure-all for COVID-19. Will you continue with the mandates and try to force people to be injected with a minimally-tested final solution? By the way, that isn't rhetorical. You owe the citizens an answer. It's time to remove the shackles and let people be free to make their own decisions regarding health. There is a political mindset that rationalizes the slogan "Government Knows Best." Those of this mindset are also willing to give up essential liberty to purchase temporary safety. I am of the opinion that good government promotes freedom and liberty, not restriction.
30 seconds, Brian.
Once again, I encourage you to stop the perpetual mask mandates and take your foot off of the throat of local businesses. Let the people who live in Branson breathe the free air. Let them make their own decisions about wearing and requiring masks at their businesses. The American people are a free people, and you are public servants. So service up our freedom and hold the government overreach. Let businesses open and remove yourselves from the equation.
Please, we're... The meeting is for, not like a show where you applaud. The meeting is to hear people and to let people enjoy the meeting and listen and think about things. So, please.
There are a lot of words for these meetings. I'm not sure enjoyable is one of them. Okay, ready to go? All right, my name is Audrey Richards. I'm at Buzz Street here in Branson. I am a Reagan candidate for representing Missouri's 7th district in Congress, so I'm running for Billy Long's seat. Oot, oot. But I am running a federal campaign, right? And I have to, for like the fourth time now, take an entire day out of the campaign to plan around this meeting because I feel like I have to come here and represent all of the pro-mask people because last time there were two of us. Even though I know that there's a hefty majority of people in Branson, they don't want to come here because it's scary. It is tough to go outside in these times, especially in an enclosed space with a lot of people. And yet, obviously, one side is more heavily represented than the other. So I'm feeling obligation to be here. And I've met with city councilors all across this district in 10 different counties, and we talk a lot. So Alderman, I would like to address your question that you posed to the doctors about how the information is presented. So I was meeting with one of the councilwomen up in Joplin. She pulls out her phone and shows me a graph that goes like this. It's down, 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 up. And she shows me, at the point it starts going up, that's when their mask mandate ended. So they are, in fact, getting the same information that you guys are getting about the effectiveness of masks. And the difference is that whenever you guys make the decision, you're not doing it out of politics. You're doing it out of care and concern for the citizens of this city. It's not political because I know it's hard to do it in front of a lot of people who are going to boo and hiss. They've done it to me, and I'm sure they've done it to all you. Y'all get called a lot of names and everything. I get it, but you guys have taken the extra step, and you are willing to take the chance and say, "I don't care. I care about the people of my city more than I care about the political, you know, imagery or whatever that I'm going to put forward because of it." And I think that's really important. I think it's really impressive that you guys are showing a lot of spine and integrity whenever so many other communities in this district have been loath to do so. I have been to 10 different counties, plus a little bit of Webster, and I feel safest here in Branson because, goodness, I live here because we have this mask mandate. They don't have it in Joplin, where I spend a lot of time. They don't have it out in, you know, the small towns. Like, we went to Seneca or Coral Junction or wherever. They don't have this, and I don't feel safe. I feel safe here at home, and I love that. And so I hope that you guys extend this because it makes me feel better. And the reality is that, yes, it hurts businesses because people aren't traveling. People aren't traveling because they don't want to go outside. They don't want to go to new places, and so it's hurting our tourism industry. And I don't think that's a function of a mask mandate because we had that one study that said...
30 seconds.
That said, hey, people are coming here simply because of the mask mandate. That same councilwoman told me she came to Branson because we have a mask mandate, and if we hadn't, she wouldn't have come here. So it's actually promoting ourselves and saying that, hey, we care about people. And I think that's really important. I think that passing this mandate is what we should do because wearing masks, you know, says a lot about us. And I think if you choose not to wear a mask, that says a lot about you and your priorities as a person. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next.
All right, my favorite time of the month. My name is Joshua Pope. I live on Ny-Hart Street. You guys have heard my speeches before. You've heard my account of having COVID. Dr. Barb thankfully answered quite a few questions that I didn't have the answers to at the moment. So I appreciate his time. I just want to point out that there's no legal, moral, or scientific basis to not wear a mask. Legally, it is allowed. It is within our law, our constitution, that what is not specifically protected in the constitution is up to the states. And what is not specifically in the state's constitution and law is up to the city government, depending on the state government type. Missouri is one of those government types. As a municipal city, you have the right to do things as long as they don't violate the Missouri Constitution or law. The Supreme Court has stated several times that so long as a law is rational to protect the people, it can be upheld. It's given to a rationality test. For example, when public smoking was banned, it went to Supreme Court. People arguing that it infringes on their constitutional rights. They did a rationality test of medical professionals, scientists, asking whether or not secondhand smoke was dangerous to people. They all said, yes, it hurts people. It kills people. So they said it was a rational decision to ban public smoking. It's the same instance here. We have scientists, medical professionals, experts, people more educated and more credible than me coming up here and telling you the same thing. And they believe it is a rational decision to make these mandates put in place. A little bit of science. The N95 mask, for example, blocks up to .3 microns in size. COVID, when traveling on droplets, is around one micron in size. Oxygen is 0.0005 microns in size. You literally cannot have the oxygen cut off from you because of wearing a mask. Cloth masks block droplets up to around 2.5 inches away from your face, according to USA Today with all those statistics. I can't see how people can believe this is a choice when your personal choice is potentially killing other people. I've said it many times before. It's not your choice anymore when that decision is harming other people. I lost my second home at Rib Crib in March when the shutdown happened. I spent a lot of time there. I loved...
30 seconds.
...working there. I loved everybody I worked with there. I lost that job where I worked and the place I loved to be at because of this shutdown. I would not be up here telling you that these masks work to do it if I did not believe that without them in place, there would be another shutdown and that people would be in the same position I was, losing their jobs, losing their homes, and losing people they need to stay with. I believe we need to keep this in place until a vaccine arrives because even if we eradicate it from Branson, it will come back. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you all keeping track of the time and in the time limits. Thank you. City clerk, please.
If you look at page 4, I made a note on there of what I was addressing, and that is directly from the CDC website. Bodie Jaeger, South Drive in Branson. I live in Ward 1. Thank you for all your time, Alderman and Mayor. How are we qualifying these masks? Are these considered PPE, Personal Protection Equipment, or Medical Devices? If you claim that a mask is a form of PPE, then the only governing authority on PPE is OSHA. And have you contacted OSHA for their guidance in this matter? When you are occupationally required to wear a mask, you must undergo several fitness tests to make sure you are physically fit enough to wear a mask. In addition, it must make sure the fit is properly effective. Did OSHA fit all of our masks? According to FDA.gov, face masks, when they are intended for a medical purpose such as source control, including uses related to COVID and surgical masks, are medical devices. When qualified as medical devices, then only a medical provider can legally prescribe these devices. Mr. Mayor and Alderman, are interview practicing physicians authorized to prescribe medical devices? The mayor has stated that he takes his direction from Mr. William Mahoney, President and CEO of Cox. However, according to Missouri Division of Professional Registration and from his own words, he does not hold any type of medical license. He is not qualified to prescribe a medical device. The director for the Tany County Health Department, Lisa Marshall, has been asked in these chambers to give her opinion regarding face masks. According to Missouri Division of Professional Registration, she is a registered dietitian, not a physician. Is she prescribing this medical device? If you are prescribing a medical device without the authority to do so, you are practicing medicine without a license. By law, this is a punishable offense carrying penalties of misdemeanor to felony. Vote no to practicing medicine without a license. Thank you.
Good evening. Marcy Kerr, Spring Creek Road, Branson. At the July 28th Board of Aldermen meeting, William Mahoney said, "This is a mask. It won't hurt you. If you don't wear it, there could be negative effects on people. Take the risk, wear it, and be a little inconvenienced." However, there are many more qualified professionals who contradict Mr. Mahoney's statement. Dr. Russell Blaylock, nationally-recognized, board-certified neurosurgeon and health practitioner, says that wearing masks for extended periods of time can cause hypoxia, as well as many other serious health conditions. Studies have shown that hypoxia can inhibit immune cells that fight viral infections. This sets the stage for contracting infections, including COVID, and makes the consequences much graver. In essence, your mask may very well put you at an increased risk of infections with a much worse outcome. So yes, these masks can hurt you. Regarding the efficacy of masks, on the CDC's website, a systematic review of randomized controlled trials was published in May of 2020, and I quote, "In our systematic review, we identified 10 randomized controlled trials that reported estimates of the effectiveness of face masks in reducing laboratory-confirmed influenza virus infections in the community from literature published between 1946 and 2018. In pooled analysis, we found no significant reduction in influenza transmission with the use of face masks. Over 70 years of studies in which masks have been evaluated have shown there is no decrease in viral transmission to make it worth the risk. Even Dr. Robert Redfield, Director of the CDC, was asked under oath if a healthy person should wear a mask. His answer was a definitive no. This data is clearly contrary to what Mr. Mahoney says. Yet, Mr. Mayor, you have advised that you take your direction from Mr. Mahoney, the president and CEO of Cox Hospital, Branson. If we understand that the usage of a mask can actually put the wearer in greater danger of contracting several illnesses, including COVID, and you have the public's best interest in mind, you would not mandate that healthy individuals wear masks. In addition, consider that according to Senator and physician Scott Jensen from Minnesota, insurance companies monetize each positive COVID case by paying $13,000 extra to the hospital. Who do you trust? Mr. Mahoney, who has no medical license, or the scientists of the CDC? Should we not then question the motives of the president of the business that stands to gain the most by encouraging the passing of this mandate? Vote no to mask mandates. There's no real science backing them."
Carolyn Dieger, 32, Branson. I am a citizen of the United States of America. Our founding fathers established a society dedicated to civil and religious liberty, purpose to perfection, and the declaration of independence. Let me remind you, America's government was never intended to be run through corruptions or mandates.
Ma'am, you need your mask on, please. Thank you.
Do I get some time back?
Sure, I'm watching.
Muslims have the religious belief of covering their faces. I am a Christian. We do not cover our faces according to a much higher authority than your office, Mr. Mayor. Found in 2 Corinthians 3:12-18, which says, "Whenever anyone turns to the Lord, the veil over our faces and hearts is taken away. Where the Spirit of the Lord is, there is freedom; and we all with unveiled faces reflect the Lord's glory." You, Mayor and Board of Aldermen, were elected to protect my free religious rights. You have made a big mistake, and it has hurt many people and businesses. But we forgive you. So now, today, do the right thing and vote no more mandates.
My name is Carla Eggman Garrett. I live on Concord Avenue in Branson, Missouri. Your memorial in front of this building states, "Dedicated to all the men and women of our armed forces who served to defend our freedoms and our country." My progenitors are great patriots, including people from the Mayflower, Patrick Henry, John Adams II President, and John Quincy Adams VI President. My ancestors fought in wars to protect our constitutional rights and freedoms. My father fought in World War II. My uncles, cousins, families, and sons fought for our country and the Constitution. When you were elected to office, you took an oath to support the United States Constitution. This oath is important because it reminds each of you that you are a public servant. In fact, failure to take the oath with bond automatically vacates the office. As a fourth-class city, Section 79 to 60 of the Missouri statutes, it states first, "You will support the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Missouri." Then it states, "You will faithfully demean yourself while in office," which would be a reasonable picture of a public servant. Yet, you have treated the citizens of Branson with disdain, disrespect, and disregard. You have served yourselves while continuing to deposit your paychecks, while I have witnessed many businesses close because of your mandate. This crisis multiplies into more than the performers or business owners. It also affects the box office people, the concession people, the ushers, et cetera, who have lost jobs and benefits. Do you know or even care? Here is the greatest authority of all times has to say to you today in Luke 11:46. Jesus replied, "And you, experts in the law, woe to you, liars and rulers. You load people down with burdens hard to bear, and you yourselves will not lift one finger to help them." So, Mayor, Board of Aldermen...
30 seconds.
...you have made some mistakes. Tonight is your chance to make it right before the forgiving citizenry. Vote no on the mask mandates. Thank you. Jesus loves you.
My name is Mark Chapin. I live on Stanley Boulevard, Branson, Missouri. Our founding fathers believed that men are moral beings who are called to do right, but sometimes fail. Government is necessary to restrain incorrect man's moral failings. At the same time, those in charge of government are human too and subject to the same moral failings as other human beings. As a result... As a result, government needs to be controlled by the governed in order to prevent those who rule from becoming tyrants. The dictionary defines a tyrant as an absolute ruler who is unrestrained by law or constitution, or one who has usurped a legitimate ruler's sovereignty. The Roman emperor, aka sexual pervert Caesar Caligula's motto was, quote, "Let them hate so long as they fear and obey." Hitler suppressed political opposition in Germany. He established the Gestapo. He established a secret state police. He established a system of concentration camps and started mass Jew baiting, which later grew into genocide of the Jews throughout Europe. Hitler managed to wipe out one-third of the Jewish population of the world, an event known as the Holocaust. We don't want to repeat history, so we choose to return to our forefathers' wisdom that government needs to be controlled by the governed. We, the people, law-abiding citizens, with the character to sustain a free society, have been given by God sovereign rule. Our great country originated by dedication to God Almighty, who is the highest authority in this great nation. Proverbs 29:1 says, quote, "Whoever remains stiff-necked after many rebukes will suddenly be destroyed without remedy." And we've seen this happen time and time again throughout history. The kind of leaders God chooses, according to Exodus 18:21, are men and women who fear God, who are trustworthy, and they hate bribes and lying. Mayor, Board of Aldermen, tonight, as law-abiding citizens, we implore you to vote no on mask
Dallin Hughes, 150 Tyler Street. The Declaration of Independence is the most famous expression of natural rights and natural law that made the American Revolution distinct. We demand freedom to govern ourselves as to whether a mask is worn or not. We demand the mask mandate be lifted tonight without fail. Because all men are free and equal, human beings have a natural right to liberty from which all other rights are derived. The principle of equality can be understood as a moral claim in two ways. One, it provides the foundation for the natural rights and obligations humans owe to each other. Two, it establishes that no man has a right to rule another without his consent. According to our founding fathers, government by consent is established through a social compact in which a group of people agree to form a government and accept its rules. We do not accept this mask mandate as being necessary for the saving of lives. In fact, more lives have been crushed because of the mandate. Furthermore, upon announcing Missouri to be fully reopened on June 16th, Governor Parsons said, and I quote, "Take extra precautions to protect yourself and those around you. We all know how to do this, and it is up to us to take responsibility for our own actions." Parsons Executive Order 2012 that was extended through December 30th says nothing about mandating masks. In fact, he says, "Wear one if you want to." The CDC only suggests mask use and has in fact rescinded their findings that the virus is contracted via aerosol particles in the air. Further, the FDA carefully reports that a PPE mask is unable to prevent any illness and has since required manufacturers to label their packaging accordingly. After the social compact, consent of the governed is maintained through regular elections. Your overreach of power in Branson has caused more harm than good through isolation, intimidation, humiliation, degradation, and distortion of the truth. If your vote tonight is to continue the violation of the inalienable rights of your constituents, your decision will indeed have dire consequences in the next election.
30 seconds.
It is time for you to vote no to mask mandates.
The last speaker will be the lady in red. It's there.
There's three ladies in red.
The last lady in red.
Sir, I have some documents.
You have to give it to the clerk, please. Thank you. She has to record it into the records.
My name is Barbara Milham, and I live on Heritage Estates Road in Branson, Missouri. According to the Declaration of Independence, our government must be based on consent and governed by its secure natural rights of the American citizens. If there were a proper vote of the people of Branson to wear or not wear masks, it would be interesting to derive at some level of truth rather than a limited and somewhat distorted view of our city officials. A minority fraction is easily solved by a majority vote. A majority fraction is dealt with in two ways. First, eliminate its cause, and by doing so, you destroy the very liberty and freedom awarded us by our forefathers by demanding all citizens have the same opinions, passions, and interests. Second, control a faction's efforts, effects. To control a faction's effects, representatives are elected and empowered to represent the will of their constituents, meaning they check and balance each other's ambitions, which acts as a filter of the people's passion and to allow reason of rule. However, these mechanisms of government are only auxiliary precautions. The main check or control of government is the people themselves. I'm not only a citizen of the state of Missouri, but I am a daughter of a United States Army veteran, Purple Heart, a granddaughter of an Army veteran that served in World War II. I myself am a former United States Marine, and I currently have a son serving as a chemical, radiological, biological, nuclear specialist overseas. I am a citizen not only of the state of Missouri, as I stated, but I am also a self-governing in a free society. To secure my natural rights as an American citizen, Mayor and Board of Aldermen, you must promote morality and support religious freedom. Morality includes virtues like courage, as well as vigilance against government oppression and prudence. When you support religious freedom, you promote morality. Mandated masks crush our religious liberty that promotes morality. Mandated masks cause neighbors to judge one another, even to point the policing and harassing law-abiding citizens. Mayor, I'd like to address you to the photograph that I presented earlier. For those of you that did not receive a copy, this is a block party that the mayor attended, and as you can see in the photograph, the mayor is standing no more than 16 inches from another constituent, wearing no mask, no social distancing.
30 seconds.
And this party was held on October 6th. Such just as full policing has literally been demonstrated in this very room by you, Mayor, and the Aldermen did nothing to stop it. It was so disturbing of you, Mayor of Branson, you instructed the cameras to be turned off. It wasn't the citizens acting out and causing embarrassment and disturbance. It was our very own city officials acting against the citizens who possess the God-given and natural and constitutional rights to be present at this public meeting. The mandated mask ordinance must be voted no. I am not anti-mask, however, I am pro-choice on whether or not to wear one. The mandated mask ordinance must be voted no by all of you tonight without fail to restore the trust and faith of a forgiving citizenry before next spring elections in 2021. And with that, sir, as you can tell, we, the citizens, are watching.
Barbara, thank you for serving.
I'm actually waiting, sir, if you'll read the instructions on that. I think the doctor will agree with me.
I'm sorry, sir.
I can't hear because of my mask.
You can get behind the microphone.
I'm waiting, because if you'll read your directions, it says it has to be on for two minutes to be effective. The doctor will back that up. It's just per functionary. My name is Brant Gray. I hold a master's in physical therapy from University of Texas Southwestern Medical Center. I have almost 20 years of clinical experience. I'm at 730 165. As a citizen of the United States, I am not accustomed to having my civil and religious rights trampled because close-minded city officials are determined to maintain their power to influence and control citizens by following distorted data, data that is constantly changing concerning a virus that's been established as no more deadly than the yearly influenza. In fact, the CDC has updated their report on how one actually contracts COVID, and it's the exact same wording they use to explain how the flu is contracted, word for word what the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services has to say. The flu is contagious. That means it spreads from person to person, often through the air. You can pass on the infection before you feel sick. You're contagious for several days after you get sick. You can catch the flu when someone near you coughs or sneezes. You can touch your surface, then your nose, and catch the flu. The flu virus can live on the surface for a few hours. Remember to wash your hands often when you are around someone who is sick. Make a point of washing hands before eating or touching your eyes, nose, or mouth. If you can, stay away from sick people. That will help stop the flu. This is the exact same wording they use for COVID. But notice, it says nothing about wearing a mask. Year after year, we managed to survive the flu without masks by using these basic precautions and those at higher risk taking extra steps, just like our governor has told us to do with COVID. What is the difference now? What is the difference in this verbiage war? What do they want to hide from the American public? The media and our local government have entrenched the masses with the fear that without a mask, they will breathe in and suddenly die. This is not true. Why tell people to stay home when they are sick, Cox Health? Why tell them to wait and only seek medical help at the point that they can barely breathe? Licensed practicing medical doctors who are successfully treating patients say the key to recovery is to seek medical help immediately upon experiencing the first symptoms and taking a combination of prescribed and inexpensive prescriptions that have been safely used and tested for decades. Yet around our nation, doctors are being threatened with loss of licensure if they prescribe these successful treatments and do not follow the mantra of wear a mask. The answer to all these questions is as simple as it is scary: deception and fear. The truth is, there's over a 98% survival rate for COVID, if you catch COVID. I have to ask you, Mayor, with that picture, does it do as I say, not as I do? As far as the hospital goes, those people, take a FITS test. If they fail a FITS test, they are not allowed, they are not allowed to treat droplet precaution patients. That FITS test, I failed 15 times. That's an R N 95, sealed. They won't let me treat because it's not effective.
My address is 3000 Green Mountain Drive, Branson. I am a citizen of the United States of America. I take full responsibility for my own health. I am law-abiding, and I possess the character to govern myself, to sustain a free society. Unfortunately, people die every year from sickness, age, accidents, automobile crashes, and crime. In each situation, although indeed sad, life goes on. You don't mandate masks for all other sickness, or stop living because of age or accidents. You don't stop driving cars because of crashes, or stop defending yourself from criminals. These are risks of being alive. We also don't live in fear. You don't buy into deception when counter-science and facts are out there. Every citizen must take personal responsibility and keep living. Globally, the flu killed between 290,000 to 650,000 annually since 2010, and Missouri's population, 6.15 million people per year 2020 so far. Missouri's Health Department reports 135,651 confirmed cases of COVID in 2020, 2,236 deaths attributed to COVID. That's 1.63% of deaths of the confirmed cases, and the confirmed cases in the entire of Missouri, 2.2%. Credibly, reports have exposed that some of the .03% or 7% of Missouri's population may have died from comorbidity, or more than one disease, but tested positive for COVID, so the death certificate reads COVID. That's a whole other level of deception, and simple research will bear that out. So the scientific facts prove very low numbers for Missouri. These low numbers in no way depict a COVID pandemic the media and other fear mongers will have you believe. However, we do have a pandemic of fear brought on by the media, brought on by fearful people who choose to wear masks everywhere, and by government officials who refuse to lead and relieve the population of this deception. Fear is not a trait of the American nor Missourian people. So what's really going on? Why would any government body of officials risk the devastation of Branson's entire economy for deception that is not supported by science? No more deception. No more mandated masks. No more. Vote no on mandated masks.
Peggy Haining. My address is on State Highway 248. Mr. Mayor.
Are you in the city limits, ma'am?
My address is 1440 State Highway, excuse me.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just heard the 248.
It has been my address since, for the last 10 years.
I ask, is it inside the city limits?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, it is astounding how easily ignorant people can be intimidated into submission. However, the citizens of Branson are learning quickly, and I am here to include you in that process. It has already been established or suggested that you're telling people to wear masks as a means of containing a virus is indeed prescribing medical advice. According to the revised Missouri statutes, Title 22, Sections 334.010 and 334.250, that is a Class D felony, punishable by one to seven years and/or $10,000, and treating each patient is considered a separate offense. That means a minimum of approximately 11,000 years. Could a member of this board, or the board as a whole, be indicted on such charges? Would sovereign immunity shield you? Well, those are subjective issues, not decided by me. But what is not subjective? Any municipal law that would require the violation of pre-existing laws is void of authority and unenforceable. The revised Missouri statutes, Title 12, Section 213.065, 213.070, and 213.075 guarantees that, quote, "All persons within the jurisdiction of the state of Missouri are free and equal and shall be entitled to the full and equal use and enjoyment within this state of any public place or any place of public accommodation," unquote. Those rights cannot be discriminated against by any employer, business, or by the state or any political subdivision of the state. However, a simple discrimination claim can quickly escalate to harassment, a Class E felony, or even unlawful restraint, better known as a second-degree kidnapping charge, which is a Class D felony, again punishable by one to seven years and/or $10,000 per offense. This scenario is not only a violation of state law, it is also a federal misdemeanor according to Title 18.
30 seconds, ma'am.
According to Title 18 of the United States Code, Section 245, it is punishable by fines and/or one to 10 years in prison, depending on the circumstances. What does this mean? It means that no place of public accommodation can legally deny access to someone who is not wearing a mask. not wearing a mask, regardless of your ordinance and attempting to force denial of access.
You're finished, ma'am.
Under threat of fine or loss of license.
Thank you.
It is not emergency management, it is extortion.
This lady is the last speaker, sir. I'm sorry, I called it earlier.
Are you allowed to speak?
No.
Why is her reason?
I cut it off. I cut it off. Her. Thank you.
What gives you the right to cut off my freedom?
I'm in charge of the meeting, the decorum. This lady is the last lady. Sir, if you need to leave, please leave. Ma'am? Thank you.
Melissa Thurman, 7:30, 165, in the city limits. I'm actually reading on behalf of Pearl Haney, who has a medical condition which prevents her from wearing a mask. And she was denied access to the forum today because she couldn't come in without her mask on and wait, so. Mr. Mayor, sovereign immunity provides a limited scope of protection. However, no one is above the law, and no one, including yourself, this board, the City of Administrators, or Branson Police Department can attempt to coerce anyone into complying with your unlawful mask ordinance. Title 18 of the United States Code, Section 242, clearly states that whoever, under color of any law, statute, ordinance, regulation, or custom, willfully suggests any person to the deprivation of any rights, secured or protected by the Constitution or laws of the United States, is guilty of a federal misdemeanor or felony, depending on these circumstances. And Section 241 of the United States Code, Title 18, states that two or more people merely conspiring to deprive people of those rights is guilty of a federal felony. Yes, state law does allow you to enact laws to prevent or abate contagious diseases. Perhaps you'd like to consider restrictions on the sale of alcohol or tobacco. Get creative and find ways to incentivize healthy lifestyle practices. However, you can neither require nor enforce compulsory wearing of face masks. Government derives its power by the consent of the governed. Mr. Mayor, the citizens of Branson do not consent to this unlawful deprivation of our rights, and having now been informed of many of those rights, if you, the board, the administrator, or the police willfully continue this unlawful behavior, you will be prosecuted accordingly. Thank you.
Heard all the public, is there anyone in, sir, one time. Sir, one time, only, please. You heard the rules to start with. Is there anyone in the courtroom? Any other aldermen wish to speak?
I just wanted to point out something, Mayor. We've gone over this, I don't know how many times. First of all, we have the court rulings that gives us the authority to do this. We're blaming masks instead of the virus, but Missouri Statute 79-380 that gives us the authority to do this, diseases control or condemnation for public facilities, the Board of Aldermen may make regulations and pass ordinances for the prevention of the introduction of contagious diseases in the city, and for the abatement of the same, may make quarantine laws and enforce the same within five miles of the city. Missouri Legislature wrote this in 1920. It's been on the books 100 years. It has been through the court system. If the, if the mayor and Board of Aldermen do decide to do this, they are within their rights as a city, which has already been reinforced by decisions in Springfield and Branson through the court system. I choose to listen to the medical community. If I go to a doctor and I have an issue with my heart, then I go to them. If I have an issue with my lung or my foot. But in this particular situation, it's for somehow just difference. You denigrate a man of great integrity back there. And the other people, this guy was the head of the American Medical Association and the World Medical Association. And you sit there and shake your head that this means nothing to you, but if you do have a heart attack, you do go to a doctor, and you will listen to them then. I think it's the issue of the man that sits in the White House that you get your orders from, that just absolutely ignores it, even though he had COVID-19.
All right, decorum, please. Please. Decorum, decorum, please. Decorum, please. Let's, please.
He just did get called out. I called him out. Mr. Mayor, I'm for this ordinance, and I'd like to see it moved forward, but I'd like to hear from the other aldermen.
Any other aldermen have anything else they want to add?
I'll go ahead and speak, just to make it very clear that I also support this ordinance. I've spent the last 14 years of my professional career working in the healthcare IT industry with individuals that are extremely intelligent, like the individuals we've heard from tonight. They're not comfortable, they're not fun, they're inconvenient, but we need to get through this together, and I too support the mandate.
Mr. Milton, you spoke before, but you want to speak again, okay.
If these are a golden parachute, why are they not?
Please, sir. Sir, sir, please.
Yeah, I'd like to suggest two amendments to this before we extend it, if I could.
Why constitutional freedom are you taking away from me? I know.
I'd like to propose two amendments, if I could. One would be, I don't know how the board would feel, about excluding churches from the mask mandate. I'm making, I'm making a.
Okay, you make a motion?
I'm making a motion for an amendment to exclude churches from the mask mandate.
There's been a motion to amend. Is there a second?
I'll second that for discussion.
Before.
A second. We have, do we have to follow a procedure?
I need to know what he's amending. Okay, we just threw out a general amendment. I want to exclude churches. How are we amending it? What are we amending it? And on that point, when we opened it up for discussion, I want to talk about the potential risks we are putting the City of Branson in by making that amendment.
Are there risks of making that amendment?
Yes.
Would you mind sharing those?
Pure and simple, we can't exclude a specific group, a specific organization, a specific entity. This ordinance has been written very plainly, very simply, so that it applies to all groups, all people, all situations, as equally as possible. When we start carving out exceptions for, oh, specific types of organizations, we potentially expose ourselves as a city to issues.
Really? Do we exclude gyms and exercising?
We don't specifically exclude gyms. We exclude people that aren't engaged in exercising.
Okay, I'd like to exclude people that are engaged in celebrating religion on Sundays in church.
Is that it?
I think that was a motion, Mr. Mayor, so we need a second for that, if we're going to go forward with that.
I know. Is there a second?
Could I have that motion, please, so I could get it?
And how is the motion?
Could you please restate it?
Where is it to go?
It goes under exclusions, under the amendment that we're talking about extending.
Mr. Mayor, or Mr. Mayor, the other point is that the ordinance before the board simply has a extension provision in it. It does not encompass the entirety of 2020-0072, except for that piece. So we would have to add a new section to the ordinance that's currently in front of the individual board members to add that exclusion, if I understand what Alderman Milton's trying to accomplish.
That's what I'm trying to accomplish.
Is there a second?
Again, could I have the motion, I mean, in a sentence? Just so I can write it down, so I'm on the same page.
Under exclu, under the existing exclusions for mask mandate, I would like to include
You have what you need, Madam Clerk?
Have a motion under exclusions to include churches.
Is there a second? It dies for a lack of second.
Okay, I'd like to make a second amendment, if I could. Obviously, there's been so much dissension, and our community is torn apart over this topic. So I would like to suggest that we mandate, we amend our bill to mandate masks on essential businesses. That will allow anybody to be able to go to grocery stores, pharmacies, banks, dry cleaners. Essential businesses, we would mandate masks. Nonessential businesses, the choice would be up to the business, and ultimately, up to the visitor's pocketbook. So those businesses that choose to enforce the masks are able to do that. Businesses that are, would choose not to man, to enforce the mask mandate, would have that option, and that would provide a choice for our community that if a business chooses not to mandate, and they see the visitors are going to locations that do enforce the mask, then the business owner will realize that, through the pocketbook, through their sales, that the mask mandates are what the visitors want.
Mr. Milton, what's, what the clerk is needing is a, is a motion that you have.
If you cut me off one more time.
I'm not cutting you off. I'm asking you.
I'm explaining the, I'm explaining the concept of why I'm making this proposal. So let me finish explaining it, and then I'll make it concise. Is that okay?
If it comes before the board, the board can have discussion. But right now, what she needs is a motion, so we can make a decision. Is that clear? She needs a motion.
Did you hear what I just said? We can make that whole thing a motion, if you want.
She can't write it all down, sir.
This is recorded. Okay. So, just some more history. Given a business a choice, ultimately, the visitors is making a choice, instead of all of us up here making those decisions. I say we let the visitors make a choice, let the businesses make a choice, and with the exception that essential businesses are mandated.
To help me understand, Alderman Milton, we have 65 lines of Bill Number 5879. Those 65 lines have words on them. What amendment are you proposing to Bill Number 5879? We need to be able to quantify it into something specific, so that the board can consider it if somebody else on the board does decide to second your amendment.
So, Chris, since you're our attorney, maybe you could be a little bit more supportive and provide me with a copy of that. Bill?
Alderman Milton, it is in front of you on your iPad. If you look at your packet.
It was in the information sent out prior.
Okay, on my iPad, where can I find that at?
Item 23.
It'll be right behind the Stafford port and behind.
Page 272.
272, and in front of the exhibits.
I don't know why I'm being fought so much. I hope page 272 is a method state report. Oh, 273, maybe? Well, then I would propose Section 3, on line 44, that would read, Bill Number 5879 is being amended to mandate mandatory masks for essential businesses, and nonessential
You want to read that back to us? And we would ask for a second.
Have a motion from Alderman Milton to add Section 3 at line 44 on the ordinance on Bill Number 5879 to amending to mandate mandatory masks for essential businesses, and nonessential businesses will be exempt from the mask mandate.
You've heard the motion, is there a second?
I second it.
It dies for a lack of second. Please, please. That dies for a lack of second. Ma'am, I can, I can ask you to leave if you're going to keep speaking out. We're up here trying to do our job. Let us do it. All right, it dies for a lack of second. And, any other? You ready to vote? Please vote. I would be happy to address this here in a few minutes, but. Please vote, yes, I've, no, one. Julia King, yes. Larry Milton, no. Jamie Whitish, yes. Jeff C., yes. Bill Skane, yes. And Bob Simmons, yes.
Branson voters, pay attention.
Ma'am, ma'am, I'm going to ask you to leave.
Sir, officer, please.
I told, I've already told you.
Maybe it will see you at your party.
See you in April, not representing us.
Oh, I represent a large majority of.
This lady brought in this picture of block parties. I went around to four block parties to visit with citizens, and I, it was a good time. The information that was given out, and folks. I did wear my mask, sir. If you look, if you look real closely, if you look real closely right in front of me on the table, which is a six-foot-long table, is a mask, a bottle of water, a plate, and my hat. And I was asked by a lady who has a home for men who have mental deficiencies, to stand and get a picture with them. And I did. Now, I took my mask off. My better decision would have been probably to keep the mask on, but the gentleman, would you let me finish? Please, let me finish. I stood, got a picture with him, and then one of the gentlemen who's at the end, one of the gents, hung around, wanted to talk. But if you look at that table, that's a six-foot table. I'm not standing right next to him. That's the perspective of the, of the picture. I'm at this end of the table, he's at the other end of the table. So, folks, I'm sorry, I can't be perfect. I can't be perfect all the time. I got out of my car and walked into a store without a mask on, and they reminded me, but I forgot. So the vote is, the vote is over? All right. Next item on the agenda.
Your Honor.
Mr. Mayor, we need to do two things. Number one, read the vote that was just announced.
Okay.
So that that's clear. And then number two, if anybody wants to take subsequent action, I see Alderwoman King nodding her head with regards to that, before we move on to the next.
I did read, I did read the results, okay?
Yes.
I want to say regardless, thank you council members for listening to all of our speakers and at least hearing us out. I do want to appreciate every single one of you.
Please, ma'am, ma'am, I'm sorry, we've got certain guidelines. Come to the microphone if you want to speak. I'll let you come to the microphone and speak.
I'll say it one more time. Regardless of the outcome, or my side or theirs, I do want to say thank you to every single one of you aldermen. and Mayor for at least letting us speak and have that right. Regardless of the outcome, whether I agree with it or not, my vote will be my vote at the end of the day and later in future votes or representations. However, I do want to say thank you. As a young representative of my community, I appreciate you hearing us out. That's all I'll say.
Thank you.
Your honor, I move to read Bill Number 5879 for its final reading due to the current ordinance expiring.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Again, we'd open it up. Chamber, council chambers. No one? Courtroom audience? No one? Aldermen? No one?
Call the question.
All right, please vote. Yes, five. No, one. Julia King, yes. Larry Milton, no. Jamie Whitish, yes. Jeff C., yes. Bill Skane, yes. Bob Simmons, yes. It passes, five to one. Now, we need to provide the introduction for the second reading.
Your honor, this is the final reading of Bill Number 5879 and ordinance extending ordinance 2020-0072 to combat the community spread of COVID-19.
You've heard the final reading of Bill Number 5879. Do I have a motion approving this?
So move.
Second.
Motion to the second's been made. Again, we ask anyone in the council chambers? Anyone in the, you wanting to speak? With your mask, sir.
All right.
Three minutes?
Three minutes on the mask mandate. Again, that's what I heard correctly, right?
You got three minutes.
Make sure we're on the final reading. All right, Bo Deager, same thing, still Ward 1, haven't moved on the last 25 minutes or so. Just want to share. We're all going to pay attention to what's going on. I think the files that I gave you earlier were directly from the CDC. And for anybody in the audience watching live, I'd like to share that even the CDC has their own documents showing that 70 to 80% of people that were wearing their mask got COVID versus about 10 to 15% that weren't wearing their mask. So clearly, the mask, people are still getting the COVID. So for you saying that they all work and stuff, you're still getting COVID. And we have a guy in the audience right now that he's got COVID, he's worn it the whole time. I haven't gotten COVID. I've, I don't wear my mask. I, I think they're ridiculous. I don't wear them. And, uh, yeah, I'm gonna, got two more minutes.
You just sit and wait for the two minutes to be over?
Yes, please.
Are you not going to sing or anything?
I mean, what would you like me to sing?
Well, we had one gentleman that came and grabbed.
Here, my wife's gonna love this. Sing me a song, you're the piano man.
Voiceless and bow.
Hey, you know what? I didn't say that was what I was coming up here for. Just, I was asked and I will present.
Sir, since you're finished, I'm going to ask you to please take your seat.
Also, curious to know if this is a medical mask or is this a PPE? I mean, I made a statement earlier. I haven't really gotten any clarification. Anybody else want to chime in? What else?
We're addressing us, we're talking to you.
Okay. Oh, also, can we get addressed that this can be for another 30 days? I'd rather it not go indefinite. Or if this is indefinite, can we come in every two weeks when you have your Alderman meetings and bring this as a topic of discussion? And we'll go over this every two weeks instead of a month? Is that how that works? Yeah, block party. And I'm glad that you can make sure that we, we're being told how we need to, to be masking up because obviously, we're not responsible for our own actions. I mean, it sounds like a, it sounds like a Biden, it sounds like a Pelosi that can go into businesses and not wear a mask. It's pretty close, kind of hypocritical. 30 seconds, Mayor. Thank you. And so, yeah, I, I'd greatly appreciate if we could get this for 30 days, otherwise, if, I don't know, I'll look into it if we can come back every two weeks and have the same discussion until this is all resolved. Thank you.
It's still a good rendition of "Piano Man," Bo.
I'm sorry. We, are you wanting to speak on this issue?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that okay? Is that okay?
Yeah.
Go for it, bud.
Nathan Horseman, 2550 State Highway 248, Branson. Listen, I wasn't going to say anything today. I had no prepared remarks. I've got to address a couple of things here because this, this has become insanity. This whole, this whole last few months has just become insanity. Number one, I would like to thank all of the Aldermen, all of the medical health professionals in our community who are out there risking their lives every day combating this virus. I've said that before and I'll keep saying it over and over and over. The utter disrespect for these people. These are career professionals that you're talking, that are coming up here talking to you guys. May I please? May I please? These are career professionals. Up until, up until...
If I have any more outbreaks from the audience, I'm going to ask you to leave.
Up until COVID-19, there's not a time in any of your life, I'm almost 50 years old. There's not a time in any of our lives when we would have went to a doctor, went to a hospital because we're sick, because there's something going on, and said, "Well, what's wrong with me, doctor?" Doctor tells you what's wrong with you because he's a medical professional. And you're saying, "Oh, you're a liar. You don't know what you're talking about. You spent your whole life, your whole career just making stuff up." That's not the case. I would also like to address this, this thing that's been going around, the Facebook the last few days, about this 70% of all people that wear masks catch COVID. Okay, this was a study done by the CDC regarding restaurants, dining in restaurants. Here's the summary, if anybody took the time to read the whole study, okay? Summary, what is already known about the topic? Community in close contact exposures contribute to the spread of COVID-19. What is added by this report? Findings from a case control investigation of symptomatic outpatients from 11 U.S. healthcare facilities found that close contact with persons with known COVID-19 or going to locations that offer onsite eating and drinking options were associated with COVID-19 positivity. It goes on and on and on. I'm just asking you guys, if you're going to cite something and put it on Facebook with a picture of, one picture, at least take the time to read the studies. Read the information that's being provided to you for crying out loud. And one more thing, and I'll shut up. I've got 51 seconds left. I'm so sick and tired of hearing about government control, government control this, government control that. You know what? The United States government is run by the, the people that you support. I know most of you here, I know, I know who you support. I don't have to say it out loud. That is your government. The CDC is your government. The FDA is your government. Okay? The President of the United States, his whole White House caught this shit because they don't, none of them wear masks. None of them. None of them. You see any Democrats out there wearing, they're got sick because they're not wearing masks? No. This, this whole situation. We're doing this for the safety and health of our communities. It's as simple as that. Please get on board. Just please. It's ridiculous.
I'm sorry, we've called the question. We've got a motion on the floor and we're ready to vote. We're ready to vote.
Mayor, please vote.
Please vote.
Mayor, they don't get to talk?
I cut the, I cut the conversation off. I'm sorry. I cut it off. It's time to vote.
Point of order.
Why are you looking at me, Alderman Milton? That goes to the mayor. The mayor's the presiding officer of this board.
I think I was going to ask a legal question. Mayor, our prot, our protocol is to put up the motion. We make a second and we open it up for community input. We have a clock up on the wall that says they each get three minutes. You asked, does anybody want to speak to this matter? And now you're saying they can't speak, we're going straight to a vote. And the Aldermen usually get a chance to comment. Are you, are you changing these?
I'm asking because we've already voted once, we've already been through the process, we've already heard multiple comments. And so I'm asking that we go ahead and bring it to a vote.
So what you're saying is you don't want to hear from the community and you don't want to hear from your Aldermen? You want to go straight to vote?
Mr. Milton, a long time ago, I learned that some people love to tear other people down to try to build themselves up. And I've heard a lot of that here tonight, and it's a shame. It's sad. But I've called for the vote. Please respect that.
Wow.
Ma'am, I'm sorry. I, I've closed it off. Please vote. Ma'am, you can either be quiet or you can leave. One of the two. We've been through enough on this tonight.
Have you opened this?
So the mayor called for a vote. The vote pulls open. I have five responses registered at this time.
I am choosing not to vote because I'm still open to listening to the public and listening to Alderman comments.
Mr. Milton? Mr. Milton? Mr. Milton? You don't want to say anything?
Mayor, I don't know why you won't let, the, the procedure is...
Lady, are you trying to make a political-type thing out of this? We're voting on a vote now. It's not for you to be...
Come on, guys.
All right. Mayor, let's please vote.
Mayor, we, it's my understanding we have a vote. Are we, we just need you to tell us how to proceed.
All right, we're at the end here, where on the second reading and, and where it says...
Yes. Are you, are you, are you ready for the vote to close? That's what we need to know. Could you please tell us to close the vote?
Please close the vote.
Thank you.
All right. Yes, five. One Alderman not voting. Julia King, yes. Jamie Whitish, yes. Jeff C., yes. Bill Skane, yes. And Bob Simmons, yes. Passes. Five. Now on to the next item, item 24, please.
Your honor, this is the public hearing and first reading of Bill Number 5880 and ordinance approving the annexation of properties located at 121 Lenhart Lane, Branson, Missouri.
Joel Hornicle.
Mayor, members of the board. This is an item requesting the annexation of a property that's contiguous to the city limits. You may recall the property to the east of this property was annexed earlier this year. As the developer got further into their plans, they saw an opportunity to expand their development into these two properties to the west. These two properties happen to be part of the Friendly Hills subdivision and are located approximately 1,500 feet west of State Highway 265. There is an existing single-family residence on the northern property, which they're outlined in red here on the screen for you. It was built in 1999 and has operated as a single-family home up until this point. The developer plans to keep the structure but operate it now as a nightly rental, which is the same use that he's proposing for the southern property as well as the property that's been previously annexed. As I mentioned, these properties are contiguous to the city limits. Staff has reviewed the request and determined there will be minimum impacts created from this annexation. As a result, staff recommends approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Any public comments need to be made?
Your honor, your honor, this is a public hearing, so we, we do need to open the public hearing.
Madam Clerk, would you please?
Okay, we, we need the public hearing open and then we, we need to take public comment, please.
We'll now open the public hearing. Heard the staff report? Anyone in the council chambers? Anyone in the courtroom? Any Aldermen?
Real quick. This looks real familiar. Is this the one out by the lake or am I just miss?
Correct. So you can see in the southern, or the bottom half of the image on the screen, that's Chateau Cove. We talked quite a bit about it the last couple of years.
Yes, we have.
And then the, the northern property, the large property on either side of Gunner Hill Lane that comes off of State Highway 265. That was a property that was earlier annexed this year. As I mentioned, this is part of a, going to be combined with that bigger development, Chateau Mountain, which, as I said, is north of Chateau Cove.
I just was hoping I was reading that map right. Thank you.
That's correct. Same area.
Alderman Simmons.
Joel, since this is now coming to the city, will we come back with a request to zone this?
Correct.
And what zoning will it be requested as?
High-density residential. That matches...
Even though it has an existing single-family home on it?
Correct. An existing single-family home isn't allowed use within the high-density residential district. And so that zoning designation will match the property that was previously annexed and zoned because their goal is to combine the properties into a single parcel. And they need to have the same zoning designation on both to be able to do that.
Thank you.
Any other Alderman?
So as we discussed, it's their intention to bring that up to code and have it nightly rental?
Correct.
Is that what he said? So that'll come after it's rezoned?
Correct.
Okay.
Because they'll have to... I apologize. Just to further elaborate on that, they'll have to obtain a city of Branson business license to operate a nightly rental, which then triggers inspections by multiple departments in order to get that license.
Right, they're bringing it up to code for, for the nightly?
Correct.
And?
Any other Alderman?
Mr. Milton.
Joel, so when they bring it up to code, they're going to have to put in fire sprinklers and everything?
I, I would have to defer to the fire department. I, I'm not aware of the exact requirements that they would require for this property in this location.
I could answer that as yes. We, we've done a lot of renovations and people will buy a home. They'll have to bring it up to code with fire sprinkler, commercial fire alarm.
Thank you.
Ready for the public hearing to be closed? Hearing is closed. You've heard the first reading of Bill Number 5880. Do I have a motion approving this bill?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Anyone in the council chambers, audience wishing to speak to this matter? Anyone in the courtroom? Courtroom is empty, all right? Any Aldermen? All right, please vote. Yes, six. Julia King, Larry Milton, Jamie Whitish, Jeff C., Bill Skane, Bob Simmons, yes.
Thank you.
Good night, bud.
Item 25. Madam Clerk, would you please provide the introduction?
Your honor, this is a public hearing and first reading of Bill Number 5880 and ordinance amending Appendix A of the Branson Municipal Co. pertaining to utilities fee schedule.
I will now open the public hearing, begin with a staff report from Mike Ray.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. Utilities has incorporated the 2021 projected revenues and expenses into the Department Water and Sewer Rate Models. Rate adjustments are recommended for fiscal year 2021 to maintain adequate revenues to fund operations and maintenance of the city's water and wastewater treatment systems. As a result of the impact of revenues from the COVID pandemic, all operational capitals, including operational rebills and replacements of process equipment, sewer and water system maintenance equipment, meter replacements, rolling stocks, vehicles are currently unfunded in the 2021 budget and will remain on hold unless revenues allow a change or repair or replacement of these components are unavoidable. And in either case, a budget amendment would have to be brought forward for the board's consideration. Moving forward with critical infrastructure and capital needs for 2021 will be contingent upon any amount of funding that's received through grants or the Tanya County Sewer Sales Tax. For fiscal year 2021, staff recommends a two... For fiscal year 2021, staff recommends a 2% water rate adjustment and a 7% sewer rate adjustment in order to maintain a balanced budget. We have prepared a snapshot of the existing rate model, rate page, and we went through this at the finance meeting a few weeks back. I know there are several members that were not present, so it'll take some time to go through that again. These rate models are a tool that we have used since 2015 to go through the rate adjustment process annually. Prior to this, we did a standard process of having a consultant look at these rates every three to five years. We found it difficult to keep up through a period that long. We would normally fall behind and found it difficult to keep a balanced budget. The blue column in the center is the 2021 numbers. We'll start with the revenue projection from our finance department for water as $2.831 million. Through our line item budgets, we have an anticipated expenditure of $3.129 million for the same period. It leaves us with a $298,000 deficit for 2021. Normally, we have the capital expenses that are drawn into this page, but we are not counting that number this year for capitals. As I mentioned, they are unfunded. So we carry that deficit on down. We have proposed a 2% rate increase, which would produce a $56,000 additional revenue, and that is included in the finance department's total revenue for water for 2021. Overall, we'll have a $241,000 deficit just for that year, but staying with the 2%, we can make this rate increase for water work for a period of time. If we were to fund all of the deficit, the proposed capital expenses, it would require another 20% rate increase, which is not practical. We are also not allowing any money to go into the Internal Service Fund that we have had to use recently to fund some purchases that we had to make for equipment repairs, and we have some more coming in the near future for that. That does start to deplete our reserve funds. It's not to an extremely concerning point at this time. As I've mentioned, the 2% rate increase would be adequate for 2021 for water. The effect for each individual rate line is at the bottom of the page. You can see that the base minimum for residential customer would go up 20 cents a month, and the commercial are broken out in the next several lines that are based on the size of meter that serves a property. And the price per thousand, the last two numbers at the bottom, go from $259 per thousand to $264. And for commercial, that would be residential, and for commercial, it would be $385 to $293. We had a question in the finance meeting of, in the sewer, when we look at that, it appears that the rate reserve, or the reserve amount, would be going up at the 7% rate increase that we proposed. So we have incorporated in what the expenses would be if we were to have to fund all the capital that is normally paid through the rates. It would increase the deficit dramatically and begin to drop our reserves also dramatically, and we would go below the 20% next year. And I know that's probably not realistic, that we do not have any capital expenses. So there's going to be a cost for that somewhere in the middle. We're a bit optimistic, I hope that revenues are better, but I think we have to be conservative because they're still unknowns. For the sewer, we follow the same pattern. That's the rate page for the sewer. Just a little bit over $4 million is the anticipated revenue, and that is if we stayed at the same rate. $4.1 million, just a little over that for expenditures. $160,000 deficit for operations. $707,000 of capital expenses for the items that I mentioned earlier are not being pulled in. They are not funded for 2021 or 2022. So we carry the deficit on down. 7% is our sewer rate adjustment recommendation. That would produce another $280,000 in revenue, and if you add the $4 million at the top and the $280,000, that would match finance department's revenue projections. And if we do not have to spend any money for any of the capital expenses, we would have some funds left over. As I mentioned, I don't think that we can possibly do that. As of right now in this year, we're looking at approximately $150,000 in necessary equipment repairs, so it's inevitable that we will have some expenses there. If we had to fund all of the capital, it would take another 13% rate. And we are not putting any funds towards the Internal Service Fund. As I mentioned, it does appear that the rate increase would likely increase the reserve If we look at the projection, if we were to do capitals, it would put us at a higher loss for the year and begin to drop our reserves very quickly, take us down to 30%, 22% next With that, we also have comparisons, and the yellow line shows the increase for residential water using 5,000 gallons currently in 2021. And I might point out that the left column starts with the highest comparable rates going down through each column to the bottom. We have surveyed 69 cities of a similar population or larger than Branson. And in the right column, the differences of some cities have rate increases and others do not this year. There's a period of time where some will have, and then the next year a city will that didn't the year before. Some cities do it like we do, where it's a small incremental increase on a yearly basis. The water would go from $823 currently, using 5,000 gallons for residential customer, I'm sorry, $1823. 2020, I'm sorry, it will go from $1787 to $1823.36. And then on the sewer, it's the same. Residential customer using 5,000 gallons of water, sewer bill would go from $1464 to $1566, and $1.2 at the 7% proposed rate increase. And then the residential combined, we would be going from $3251 to $3389 for a total water and sewer bill of $1.38 a month. On the commercial side, this is a two-inch water meter, commercial water meter using 100,000 gallons of water. We fall in the mid-range, just under mid-range, of our commercial comparisons. And with this rate increase of 2% for water, a commercial customer with a two-inch meter using 100,000 gallons would go from $431.17 to $439.79, increase of $8.62. For the commercial sewer customer using a two-inch meter and 100,000 gallons, it would go from $489.78 to $524.06, which is an increase of $34.28. And then the commercial water and sewer combined would go from $920.95 to $963.86, increase of $42.91. If the rates are approved, the proposed water and sewer rate adjustments outlined in the attached ordinance would become effective upon the first reading, or billing hit January 2021. Staff recommends approval of the bill.
All right. You've heard the staff report. It's time for any public comments. Anyone in the council chambers wishing to make public comments on the water and sewer rate changes? No one's in the courtroom, so any alderman wish to make any comments on the sewer-water rate changes?
Yes. Joel, I didn't know if I should ask along the way, or wait for your presentation, would you mind going back to the water spreadsheet that you had where you laid out?
Yep.
It's way at the beginning.
May it take me a moment to get there.
Actually, I was going to ask about sewer also, so let's ask about that first. According to the chart, 2018, the actual revenue was roughly $5 million. 19 was $5 million. 20 was close to $5 million, and our 2021 projected is $4 million, which is a 20% decrease in sewer rate fees compared to 2020, and we're adding a 7% increase.
I might point out that the 2020 number, the $4.9 million, is the budget number, the original budget number.
Okay.
Our anticipated revenue for 2020 is $4 million.
Thank you.
Because of the drop.
So we did go from 5.1 actual in 19 to about $4 million in '20.
Right.
So if you go to the water, I guess it'll be the same answer.
Yes, sir.
Because that was a 30... Okay. It was a 30% decrease from the budgeted number.
Right.
But a flat number, I guess, compared to 2020?
Right. Being very conservative, very cautious as to what we would have in 2021. We made some drastic cuts in our expenditures for 2020, and we will have to carry that into 2021 also.
Okay. Just one other question. When these numbers are submitted to accounting, are we, are you using the numbers that are, that we feel just aren't realistic because we know there's going to be some expenses? Because I know at your next click, it put in...
Right.
...potential expenses.
Right. Those.
So those are the ones we're going to be looking at? Because that's going to be more realistic, right?
Well, I think it's going to be somewhere in a mid-range. Maybe we can get by with not having to do the full 707.
But we know, like you said, we don't know what it'll be. We want it to be minimal, but we know there's going to be something.
Exactly.
Thank you very much.
Any other aldermen have any comments? The public hearing is now closed. You've heard the first reading of bill number 5881. Do I have a motion approving this bill?
So, ma'am.
Second.
Motion and a second's been made. Anyone in the council chamber wishing to speak regarding this matter? Anyone in the, well, no one in the courtroom. Any alderman wish to say something additionally? Yes, six. Six present. Voting Julia King, Larry Milton, Jamie Whitish, Jeff C., Bill Skane, and Bob Simmons, all vote yes. Passed. You have your increase.
Thank you, sir.
Yes. We need to take a quick break. Five-minute break. Looks like about eight till we'd be back here. Madam Clerk, would you provide the introduction for this, please?
Your Honor, this is the first reading of Bill Number 5882, an ordinance approving the renewal of the contract with Affinity Chemical LLC for the purchase of operational chemicals used in the city's wastewater treatment process and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract.
Staff report from Mike Ray.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. Eight bids were received in 2018 for the purchase of operational chemicals used in the city's water and wastewater treatment processes. Contracts were entered with vendors in 2019 that provided the lowest of best bids for the chemicals.
Bless you, Beth.
All, if approved, this will be the first of two optional contract renewals for Affinity Chemical and the final of two operational contract renewals for Brent Tag Mid South and Hawkins Incorporated for the chemical providers' contracts. Contract terms require the vendor to maintain the original unit price or a lower unit price if renewal is desired. All the chemical companies have agreed to hold 2018 unit pricing under this renewal. Brent Tag Mid South agrees to renew their contract for chlorine, sulfur dioxide, and 30% potassium peroxide for a total not to exceed cost of $35,000. Hawkins Incorporated agrees to renew their contract for hydrofluosilicyc acid used in the water treatment process to supplement fluoride levels. And liquid bleach for disinfection of well water and granular chlorine for disinfection and cleaning purposes. A not-to-exceed contract price of $16,500. Affinity Chemical LLC agrees to renew their contract for a total not to exceed $104,000 for aluminum sulfate, which is used for phosphorus removal in the wastewater treatment plants. This item provides for this contract with Affinity and then the next two items also. Staff recommends approval of the bills.
You've heard the first reading of Bill Number 5882. Do I have a motion approving this bill?
So moved.
There's a motion? Second?
Second.
Second? All right. Anyone in the council chambers? Any alderman wishing to speak to this matter?
So you're saying on the next three items, they're holding the 2018?
That's correct.
Gotcha.
Sensing you want to vote, please vote. Six aldermen present? Yes, six. Julia King, Larry Milton, Jamie Whitis, Jeff C., Bill Skanes, Bob Simmons, all vote yes. Passed. Ready to move on to item 27. Madam Clerk, please provide the introduction.
Your Honor, this is the first reading of Bill Number 5883, an ordinance approving the renewal of the contract with Brent Tag Mid South Incorporated for the purchase of operational chemicals used in the city's water and wastewater treatment processes and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract.
All right. Begin with a staff report from Mike Ray.
No additional information, Your Honor. We recommend approval of the bill.
All right. You've heard the first reading of Bill 5883. Do I have a motion approving this bill?
So moved.
Motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Anyone in the council chambers? Any aldermen? Six aldermen present? Six yes. For the record, Julia King, Larry Milton, Jamie Whitis, Jeff C., Bill Skanes, Bob Simmons, all vote yes. Passed. Ready to move to item 28. Madam Clerk, please provide the introduction.
Your Honor, this is the first reading of Bill Number 5884, an ordinance approving the renewal of the contract with Hawkins Incorporated for the purchase of operational chemicals used in the city's water and wastewater treatment processes and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract.
Any report from staff?
We recommend the bill.
Move it. All right. You've heard the first reading of Bill 5884. Do I have a motion approving this bill?
So moved.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Anyone in the council chambers? Any aldermen? Yes, six. Six aldermen present? For the record, Julia King, Larry Milton, Jamie Whitis, Jeff C., Bill Skanes, and Bob Simmons, all voted yes. Passed. Item Number 30.
Your Honor, this is the first reading of Bill Number 5885, an ordinance approving a contract with CDW Government LLC pertaining to the purchase of computer hardware and software and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract.
All right.
And that's item Number 29, right?
Oh, is it 29?
Yeah.
Stipped over. Chad Foster.
Mayor, members of the board, this contract is with CDWG or CDW Government. It enables the city to purchase a variety of necessary technology items. The IT department centralizes the purchase of technology items to ensure each purchase is properly vetted, inventoried, and we're able to make sure we're using our funds as efficiently as possible. You probably recall, I recently brought a similar contract before you for your consideration and approval, and you might be wondering why I'm back so soon with such a similar contract. The previous agreement was to increase the contract amount for 2020, which means it expires on December 31st. So the agreement before you this evening is for next year, or 2021. To recap, this agreement allows us to purchase hardware and software and also enables us to purchase a required network infrastructure maintenance-related items. It does utilize a cooperative purchasing contract via the National IPA Agreement, which CDWG is authorized to use. The total not-to-exceed amount is $120,000. However, I'd point out that there's no minimum purchase amount required, and we always do our due diligence to ensure we're getting the best bang for our buck, so to speak, on anything we purchase. Funds are included in the proposed 21 budget appropriations. Staff recommends approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
You've heard the first reading of Bill Number 5885. Do I have a motion approving this bill?
So moved.
Motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Anyone in the council chambers? Any aldermen? Six aldermen present? Six yes. For the record, Julia King, Larry Milton, Jamie Whitis, Jeff C., Bill Skanes, Bob Simmons, all vote yes. Passed. Ready to move to item 28. Madam Clerk, please provide the introduction.
Your Honor, this is the first reading of Bill Number 5884, an ordinance approving the renewal of the contract with Hawkins Incorporated for the purchase of operational chemicals used in the city's water and wastewater treatment processes and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract.
Any report from staff?
We recommend the bill.
Move it. All right. You've heard the first reading of Bill 5884. Do I have a motion approving this bill?
So moved.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Anyone in the council chambers? Any aldermen? Yes, six. Six aldermen present? For the record, Julia King, Larry Milton, Jamie Whitis, Jeff C., Bill Skanes, and Bob Simmons, all voted yes. Passed. Item Number 30.
Your Honor, this is the first reading of Bill Number 5885, an ordinance approving a contract with CDW Government LLC pertaining to the purchase of computer hardware and software and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract.
All right.
And that's item Number 29, right?
Oh, is it 29?
Yeah.
Stipped over. Chad Foster.
Mayor, members of the board, this contract is with CDWG or CDW Government. It enables the city to purchase a variety of necessary technology items. The IT department centralizes the purchase of technology items to ensure each purchase is properly vetted, inventoried, and we're able to make sure we're using our funds as efficiently as possible. You probably recall, I recently brought a similar contract before you for your consideration and approval, and you might be wondering why I'm back so soon with such a similar contract. The previous agreement was to increase the contract amount for 2020, which means it expires on December 31st. So the agreement before you this evening is for next year, or 2021. To recap, this agreement allows us to purchase hardware and software and also enables us to purchase a required network infrastructure maintenance-related items. It does utilize a cooperative purchasing contract via the National IPA Agreement, which CDWG is authorized to use. The total not-to-exceed amount is $120,000. However, I'd point out that there's no minimum purchase amount required, and we always do our due diligence to ensure we're getting the best bang for our buck, so to speak, on anything we purchase. Funds are included in the proposed 21 budget appropriations. Staff recommends approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
You've heard the first reading of Bill Number 5885. Do I have a motion approving this bill?
So moved.
So moved.
There's a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Second? All right. Anyone in the council chambers? Any aldermen?
Just a quick question. Any of this subjected to or subject to recover through the CARES Act? Or any of this equipment?
Well, certainly, we're always looking at ways we can recoup funding through CARES Act. I can't speak to anything specifically for next year. However, I don't have any information on that. So I guess the answer would be no.
This is hardware that explained to me a little bit what we might be talking about for next year.
So while it'd be less for next year, we're talking about desktops, laptops. More specifically, we've got software that we use for our backup systems, VMware for our operations of our virtualization servers. We have contracts we pay through that. And then the biggest one we pay is through Cisco for our smart net, for our network infrastructure, for our switches and our routers and things like that.
Okay. Thank you, Chad.
You're welcome.
How close are we going to get to that NTE for the 120, the not-to-exceed?
I don't anticipate. Most years, we get real close to that. In fact, like this year, we went over.
Was it the same for 2020?
No, 2020, we increased it because of COVID and the things we had to do there. But I will say, I don't know that we'll use that full 120 for next year. I really, it would surprise me if we did for next year.
Good. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Chad?
Yes, sir.
I know all areas, we're cutting back and sharpening our pencils. Are there any areas that you feel, from a security standpoint, ransomware, getting hacked, any of that, that were maybe taking a little more risk than we should be due to finances?
I can say that we have some capital needs in IT that I would very, very much like to have funded. I know every director would say the same thing for their capital request, so I'm not going to stand alone in that. However, there's, you know, a security appliance that we need that would drastically make me sleep better at night. I will say it that way. We also have some switches that are going end-of-life, beginning of next year, that are on the capital list that we very much need. So we'd be falling behind if we don't get those replaced very soon. Hopefully, the funding will come in and revenue will be enough that we can circle back, and hopefully, that'd be a priority at that time. So there are things I'd like to see us purchase to increase our security, yes. Do I think that we are necessarily overexposed at this time? Nothing in our network logs or anything like that tell me that we see anything unusual. That changes by the day and sometimes by the hour, by the minute, and I can't make any promises by any stretch.
Sure.
I don't mean to dance around your question.
No, I understand what you said. I just know that that particular topic is just, in my mind, extremely important because we just need one bad deed, and it's going to cost us a lot. So...
You know, we do a lot of things internally that, you know, you can spend a whole lot of money on capital items, and we have needs there. But, you know, we also do things operationally in terms of cybersecurity awareness training that's mandatory for our employees. We do phishing testing on our employees to ensure compliance, and I look at those reports and share those with the Assistant City Administrator. We do things internally to help protect us that, I mean, those things cost, but they're not substantial capital investments.
Right.
To protect us ongoing, but we do have needs there in capital that I would like to see met, yes.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to share an opinion that I think that, I know everything's important, but some things may be a little more important, and I think that's one of them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other aldermen? Six aldermen present? Six yeses. For the record, King, Milton, Whitis, Skanes, and Simmons all vote yes. Passed. Ready for item 30 now.
Your Honor, this is the first reading of Bill Number 5886, an ordinance approving the memorandum of understanding with Branson School District pertaining to providing four school resource officers, one at each Branson School District campus, and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract.
Staff report from Jeff Matthews.
Mayor, members of the board, this is an annual renewal of our memorandum of understanding with the Branson School District to supply four school resource officers, one at each campus. This understanding says that they will pay 75% of two of the officers' salaries. That 75% is about the school year. The other two come out of our pocket, and we recommend approval.
You've heard the first reading of Bill 5886. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And a second. All right. Anyone in the council chambers? Any aldermen?
Just reiterating, Chief, this is because of the Public Safety Initiative that we're undertaking this. This is what instigated this and funds this, and the Public Safety Fund.
Those two salaries?
Yes.
Yes, sir, that was the agreement. However, I've been in conversation with Dr. Swafford to see if we could seek the 75% for the other two as well.
Ooh, that'd be nice. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, six. Six present. Alderman Simmons, Skane, C., Whitis, Milton, and King all vote yes. Passed. Item Number 31.
Your Honor, this is the first reading of Bill Number 5887, an ordinance approving the renewal of the contract with InRoute Enterprises LLC to provide vehicle, equipment, installation, and repair services and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract.
Staff report from Jeff Matthews.
Mayor, members of the board, this is year two of an extension of a contract that was last year for InRoute Enterprises. InRoute is the one that we contract with to install all the hardware in the city vehicles, transportation cages, gun racks, and things like that. This contract is not to exceed $20,000 for the year. We recommend approval.
You've heard the first reading of Bill 5887. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Anyone in the council chambers? Any aldermen? Six present? Six yeses. Alderman voting yes. Simmons, Skanes, C., Whitis, Milton, and King.
Mr. Mayor, I want to thank her for doing this.
Yep.
And that's, you've done remarkable.
Yeah, doing a good job.
Thank you so much.
Under some unusual circumstances. Before we read item Number 32, I believe Mr. Simmons would like to...
Yes, I would like to excuse myself from the discussion and the vote on item 32 and 33, so I'll remain out on both of these through the fact that I'm the majority owner of Table Rock Asphalt.
He's going for the ribs.
Madam Clerk, would you read the first reading of Bill 5888?
Your Honor, this is the first reading of Bill Number 5888, an ordinance accepting the proposal of Table Rock Asphalt Construction Company Incorporated for the purchase of concrete and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract.
Begin with a staff report from Keith Francis.
Mayor, members of the board, this is for our annual concrete contract for purchase of ready-mixed concrete. We sent bids out and received bids on September 9th of 2020 from Table Rock Asphalt Company for purchase of concrete for the 2021 year. Staff recommends approval of this and for an amount not to exceed $25,000.
You've heard the first reading of Bill 5888. Do I have a motion approving the bill?
So moved.
There's a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Second? All right. Anyone in the council chambers? Any aldermen wishing to speak to this matter? Five aldermen voting, five vote yes. For the record, Bill Skanes, Jeff C., Jamie Whitis, Larry Milton, Julia King, all vote yes. Passed. Now, item 33.
Your Honor, this is the first reading of Bill Number 5889, an ordinance accepting the proposal of Table Rock Asphalt Construction Company Incorporated for the purchase of stone and asphalt for the public work streets departments and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract.
Begin with a staff report from Keith Francis.
Mayor, members of the board, this is for our, excuse me, our hot mix asphalt and our aggregate-based material, things like that, for our street department for road repairs. We opened bids on September 10th of 2020, and this amount is for not to exceed $60,000, and staff recommends approval. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
You've heard the first reading of Bill 5889. Do I have a motion approving this bill?
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
Second? Anyone in the council chambers? Any aldermen?
Just a quick question, Keith. In acquiring this, this is on an as-needed basis?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I know, like, the areas around Michelle are starting to wear pretty bad. I didn't know if, on Michelle, that goes into Bob and Mike subdivision, it's starting to be...
Oh, Michelle, yeah.
Do you use coal mix or coal pack, or is it all hot mix?
Well, we try to use hot mix, but the grade right there on Michelle, how it comes off of 76, when we replace that, that's part of our paving program. We're looking at seriously putting concrete back in there just for that portion.
All the weight.
People pull down there and it shoves, asphalt shoves, real bad anyway.
Thank you.
Similar to what we've done at Long Street down here.
Five aldermen voting, five yes. Bill Skanes, Jeff C., Jamie Whitis, Larry Milton, Julia King, all vote yes. Motion passed. Invite Mr. Simmons back, please. Madam Clerk, would you provide us with the reading of Bill Number 5890?
Your Honor, this is the first reading of Bill Number 5890, an ordinance approving the first renewal of the services contract with Under the Wire LLC pertaining to traffic signal maintenance services for the city and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract.
Thank you. Begin with a staff report from Keith Francis.
Mayor, members of the board, this is for our signal maintenance contract for Under the Wire LLC. This is the first of three renewals that we were able to do for our contract agreement. This amount is in the amount of 6...
This amount is in the amount of $16,500, and staff recommends approval, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
You've heard the first reading of bill 5890. Do I have a motion approving the bill?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Anyone in the council chambers? Any aldermen? Six present, six yeses. Individual responses for the record, Bob Simmons, yes. Bill Skanes, Jeff C., yes. Jamie Whiters, yes. Larry Milton, yes. Julia King, yes, passed. I need to recuse myself for the next two items. They deal with the Delta Dental Plan. I believe that my son is also involved in that, so I'll be out for the next two.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please provide the introduction for item number 35?
Your Honor, this is the first reading of bill number 5891, an ordinance approving the 2021 Delta Vision Plan premiums through Delta Dental of Missouri for the City of Branson, authorizing a mayor to execute the contract.
Okay. We'll begin with a staff report from Jan Fisher.
Members of the board, this is kind of a cleanup, one of the last-minute contracts that came in that we would have liked to have had last time, but this is for the vision plan, which is solely paid for by employees. Essentially, what it does is it pays for materials only, lenses and frames and contact lenses and things like that. The eye exam itself will be under the medical plan, so it's not a part of this particular contract that we have. It's a continuation from what we had last year, no increase in costs, and staff recommends approval, and I'll answer any questions.
Okay. You've heard the first reading of bill number 5891. Do I have a motion approving this bill?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Third.
Anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak to this matter? Any aldermen? Since you want to vote, please vote. The vote is six yes, zero no, passes. Julia King voting yes, Larry Milton, yes, Jamie Whiters, yes, Jeff C., yes, Bill Skanes, yes, Bob Simmons, yes. Madam Clerk, would you please provide the introduction for item number 36?
Your Honor, this is the first reading of bill number 5892, an ordinance approving payments for the 2021 supplemental insurance premiums, flexible spending accounts, and health savings accounts, and approving enrollment of all health coverages to be managed through American Fidelity Assurance Company, and authorizing a mayor to execute the contract.
We'll begin with a staff report from Jan Fisher.
Members of the board, American Fidelity covers a wide variety of things for the city. First and foremost, they provide us with the online enrollment platform, and then they provide us with supplemental insurance, like the flexible spending, the accident, cancer, critical illness, hospitalization, things like that. The one thing new for 2021 is they're also going to provide the health savings accounts, the actual debit cards, those that on the Anthem, HSA plans, they'll be able to carry. We're going to transition over from Central Bank, actually with Central, HSA Central is who they've subbed that out to, and employees are currently getting a monthly service charge on those HSA accounts, but in 2021, through American Fidelity, that service charge will go away, so it's going to save employees money. Staff recommends approval, and I'll answer any questions.
You've heard the first reading of bill number 5892. Do I have a motion approving that bill?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak on this matter? Any aldermen?
Just real quick, Jan, I want to compliment you for doing that, and every little bit we can save the employees, right, the better, so thanks for doing that.
Thank you. Any other? Then please vote. Vote is six yes, zero no. Item passes. Julia King, yes. Larry Milton, yes. Whiters, yes. Jeff C., yes. Bill Skanes, yes. Bob Simmons, yes.
Now, we need to get the mayor back. She's waited patiently, guys.
I know. Okay. We got two. Madam Clerk, would you please give the introduction to item 37?
Your Honor, this is the first reading of bill number 5893, an ordinance approving the renewal of the contract with Tannehill County Health Department for public health services, and authorizing a mayor to execute the contract.
All right. We have a staff report from Jamie Roush.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. This is the third renewal of a four-year contract with the Tannehill County Health Department for the City of Branson Public Health Services. Staff does recommend approval, and we are happy to answer any questions.
Okay. You've heard the first reading of bill number 5893. Do I have a motion approving the bill?
So moved.
Second.
There's a second, all right. Anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak to this matter? Any aldermen wishing to speak to this matter?
Separating apart altogether, again, I want to offer my apology up here for what you've had to listen to and things that you've been put through. You're just doing your job. You're greatly appreciated in your gem in this community, as far as I'm concerned. My question would be, is this consistent with 2021 and 2019, the funding levels?
It is. $180,000 is what we had budgeted for 2020, and then 2021, and it is currently in the proposed budget.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Simmons?
Is he done?
Okay.
Yeah, I think so.
On a lighter note, I think I would complain if I were you that we actually had this budget item in this meeting where we had the mass ordinance approval.
Any other comments?
Lisa, I have about a dozen questions for you. Just kidding. Just trying to add some levity. I too wanted to say thank you for all you do for us. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, please vote. There are six aldermen present, yes, six. Julia King, Larry Milton, Jamie Whiters, Jeff C., Bill Skanes, Bob Simmons all vote yes. Motion passed. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ready to go on to item number 38.
Your Honor, this is the first reading of bill number 5894, an ordinance approving the renewal of the contract with Capital Solutions Consulting pertaining to lobbying services and authorizing a mayor to execute the contract.
Begin with a staff report from Jamie Roush.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. This is the renewal for the lobbying services contract with Capital Solutions Firm. The original contract was 2020. This is the renewal, and then we'll go back out to bid next year. The amount is $25,000, and staff does recommend approval of this bill.
Okay. You've heard the first reading of bill number 5894. Do I have a motion approving this bill?
So moved. Second.
There's a second, all right. Anyone in the audience? Any aldermen?
Yes, sir. This is not to beat them up, but we didn't get a lot of our legislative priorities moved down the line, I guess because of COVID-19, but this money that we're paying in, just for the record, is to help us to get influence, to adjudicate or legislate our legislative priorities. That's basically what we're talking about here.
It is, and if it helps, that we ask of him that he gives us a list on a monthly basis as to what he has done for the city during that month before we pay them out. And we have a list. It's five, six things every month, if that's helpful.
I just want it to be more helpful this next year.
Understand, yes.
Mr. Simmons?
I just want to reaffirm, when do we set those legislative priorities?
I can speak to that, alderman Simmons. We're going to have a study session in November where we're going to have basically a list of the legislative priorities that are important to the directors. We'll go through those, the legalities behind some of those, and hopefully get some good feedback from you as to which one of those we should champion, and then we'll bring those back before the board in the form of a resolution, and then that's what will be presented to Capital Solutions Consulting Group for the following year when the legislature's in session in January.
Thank you.
And Jamie, as you get those updates from them, would you forward those to the board so we can keep track of the movements?
Certainly, I keep a spreadsheet so I can send that to y'all out monthly.
That'd be great, thank you.
Being new to the board, I know that this year has been an off year, so I appreciate the questions thus far, but I was going to ask for those of you who have had contact or worked with this firm before, what's, what value? I was interested in maybe some examples of the value we get from them, because I read through everything before tonight's meeting, and I was a little gray on the value from that, but that could just be because I'm new.
Julie and I have met and talked with him and have been at legislative sessions, but the people that deal with him most is Stan. I think John is too. Stan maybe could speak to that.
Want to go Stan?
I also have the list with me tonight, if you guys would like some breakdowns of those items as well.
Alderwoman King, I can give you one specific example. Back in mid-March, Mr. Berkstetter, who we deal with, with Capital Solutions Group, he's been pushing the tax issue with regards to the loophole, with regards to ticket resellers. So one of the things that he does is he goes to the individual legislatures, legislators, excuse me, and advocates on behalf of the city, tries to marshal support, and then he advises and helps get our message to our local legislature so we can get a bill crafted and get one on the floor. And then in that specific scenario, we went up on it with him, on his behalf, we advocated to some of our local area senators and representatives, and then we had the opportunity to present to, like, the local government committee to try to get this thing moved along. And then, as we all know, in the end of March, everything got shut down and put on ice, but he's kind of our mouthpiece, if you will, up in Jefferson City, doing what we can't do, because that would require us to go up there and come back, and go up there and come back, and it's more of a matter of convenience more than anything, because he knows the circles, he knows who to, who stands on which side of what issues, and how to marshal support, not only for the city, but amongst other similar municipalities that have the same issues.
And what I would say is probably the most important thing that I would say that they have done for us is without him, we would not have the opportunity to have passed the public safety sales tax. He literally brought that in on the last day of session and got the legislature to approve it for us. The other thing that maybe some folks don't realize also is that he keeps a close eye on all legislation that affects us. One of the things that he was able to bring to our attention last year, as well as even this year, was we had, for some reason, we had a senator want to basically reduce our tax base, and he brought that to our attention and was able to rally support to defeat that. So I, this year was tough when March came. Basically, the session wound up with only three things, I believe it was, passing, and they were all involving finances with the state.
Thank you, very helpful.
At some, you know, at some point in time, it would be good, I think, that Brian might be able to be here in a time where he could meet, meet the old neighbor.
He'll be down when we bring about the legislative priorities.
Do the priorities, great, so all make any... All right. All right, are you ready to vote? Please vote.
If you could please register your votes one more time, a little slow getting back over here. Thank you.
Six aldermen present, yes, six. Alderman King, Milton, Whiters, C., Skanes, and Simmons all vote yes, passed. Item 39, please.
Your Honor, this is the first reading of bill number 5895, an ordinance approving the amendment to the contract with Tannehill County, Missouri pertaining to reimbursement for certain qualified expenses for the Tannehill County General Aviation Airport, and authorizing a mayor to execute the contract.
All right. Begin with a staff report from Jamie Roush.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. This is an amendment to a contract for the Tannehill County Airport. We had a request earlier in the year that they, around August, that we make an amendment to allow the money that we give them into the tune of $10,000 to be able to be used for the insurance premiums for this year. It had to go back before the county for permission first, because typically, the expenses is for fixed assets with a useful life of greater than five years. So it went back before the county, and they added the language in order for them to be able to use this money to be able to pay their insurance premiums for this year. That's what the amendment is all about, and staff does recommend approval of this, and I'm happy to answer any further questions. Thank you.
Alderman Milton, you serve as the representative on that board. Do you have any comments?
Yes, thank you. I do sit on the board, and this was addressed, and a big problem they're having with revenues this year is they get a percentage of the aviation fuel tax nationwide as dividend amongst airports, and we all know what's happened with aviation and the lack of fuel, so the lack of tax. And so they didn't have that revenue, and they acknowledged that it was previously approved for capital improvements. They asked if we could amend it to include their insurance premiums, and I was very supportive of it, understanding the financial strain they're under, and so I'm glad staff's recommending it. Thank you, Jamie.
Any other aldermen wishing to speak to this?
Yeah, again, being new, I just had a couple questions. So how many years have we been providing this?
Wow, that's a good question. I, we've been doing it for a very long time. I've been here 12 years, and I know we've been doing it for at least that long, the $10,000.
And are there services that the city utilizes, or is this just a good-faith relationship? I'm just asking how long and why, and the value that the city gets out of this.
It's just, it's a contract agreement allowing them a $10,000 for capital. It's to help them out for capital purposes. It's a reimbursement contract, similar to we do other entities here in the city.
And if I might add, the amount of general aviation that they bring into our area, the economic impact to our city is, is great, and so I think it's not just something that we're just trying to help support them, we're really supporting our community with additional tax revenues.
Thank you.
Any additional comments?
Your Honor...
Did I goof?
I don't have, oh, I don't have motion and second on this. Did I?
I thought I did, but, you know, anything's possible.
We're all for it. Yeah. I'll so move to approve.
Unless somebody remembers that they did it, I did not have anything.
Heard the first reading of bill number 5895. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? All right, we've had discussion. Now, please vote.
I hope I didn't make that.
I thought we'd motioned.
I can't believe I would have missed something, Lisa.
Well, I won't say I...
I have four responses at this time.
I think I did.
If you could please re-register your vote.
I usually don't miss if I can.
I'm at five.
Need to vote again?
Yeah, if everyone could please register their vote one more time to make sure it registered. Thank you.
Good lady. We're working too fast for you, are we, Chad?
Always.
There it is, new software you need.
Six present, yes, six. Alderman Simmons, Skane, C., Whiters, Milton, King all vote yes, passed. Ready for item number 40, Madam Clerk.
Your Honor, this is the first reading of bill number 5896, an ordinance approving the intergovernmental agreement between Tannehill County and the City of Branson pertaining to reimbursement for certain qualified expenses from the Coronavirus Aid Relief Economic Security Act, and authorizing a mayor to execute the contract.
Thank you. Begin with a staff report from Jamie Roush.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. We submitted an application for reimbursement of funds regarding the care... We submitted an application for reimbursement of funds regarding the CARES Act money that was given to the county. We submitted that back in July. We submitted $19,169.51, and this is pretty much giving us the approval to accept this money to the tune of $18,000. Oh goodness. $412 less than the $19,000, and that is simply because one of the items that we turned in was a subscription. And the terms of this grant was essentially it's money that we had already had to spend by June 30th, and so a subscription was on a monthly basis. So what we're going to do is we're going to submit it in phase two for the next couple of months that we've already spent, and so on and so forth. And so that's really the one thing, the one item, that did not get approved, and understandably so. We did already expend this money, and so this would be a reimbursement of funds. So we are happy that this is out there, and it's a reimbursement, and we're going to submit another round in phase two here before Monday, so.
All right, you've heard the first reading of bill 5896. Do I have a motion approving this bill?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Anyone in the council chambers? Any alderman? Mr. Simmons?
Now, we've identified a great deal more money that qualifies for that, have we not?
Yes, sir, we did, and that will be.
Does phase two, is the end of that date Friday?
The end of phase two was September 30th. So all expenses that have incurred up to September 30th, but we have to apply by October 19th.
Okay, I was just in the Tanney Economic Partners meeting this afternoon, and I thought they said Friday was the deadline.
Well, I got an email that said the 19th, but we're planning on having it all together and done by tomorrow anyway, so we're going to meet that deadline. And yes, the majority of our expenditures happen in phase two realm. July, August, we had anticipated possibly a September close date, so we wanted to make sure and get as much in as at all possible.
And Alderman Simmons, it might have been. I know for private businesses, this Friday was the deadline.
Well, it's also for phase two of the.
For the city also? Okay.
And that could be. I've been out for a few days, so that could be, and so I will double check, but we're planning on having it done. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Please vote. Alderman King, Milton, Whiters, C., Skanes, and Simmons, all vote yes, passed. Ready to move on to 41, is that right?
Your honor, this is the first reading of bill number 5897, an ordinance approving the amendments to the lease agreements with Hughes Entertainment Incorporated, Tanns Enterprise LLC, Branson's Best Incorporated, and Recreation Investment and Management Corporation pertaining to a reduction in base rent for fiscal year 2020, an authorization mayor to execute the contract.
Begin with a staff report from Jamie Roush.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. If you recall, a few months back, we had this discussion to allow some assistance for some of our West 76 leased properties. The idea behind it was that the businesses had been closed as a result of COVID for a period of time, and they needed some assistance to help them with their rent. And so what we did was, the amount of time that they were closed, we calculated that, whether if it was six weeks, it was about 12%. If it was two months, it was about 17%. And so that's where we got the adjustments. And this adjustment was for base rent, the base rent. These leases, there's five leases. Most of them have a base rent that is required, and then a percentage of sales. And obviously, if they're closed, we're not getting the percentage of sales, and neither are they. So we wanted to, in good faith, help them out with their base rent, and that's how we came up with these numbers. And this is an amendment for those leases in accordance with the percentages. So we're reducing for this year only, the track is 12%, and then the other ones are 17%, because we called and got the length of time that they were closed. And so that's where the calculation came from. We are happy to recommend this bill, and I'm happy to answer any further questions that you may have. Thank you.
Okay, you've heard the first reading of bill 5897. Do I have a motion approving the bill?
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
All right, anyone in the council chambers? Any alderman? Yes, six present, yes, six. Alderman Simmons, Skanes, C., Whiters, Milton, King, all voted yes. And by the way, Jamie, thank you for the good results that we're seeing on the finance. It's all your fault. Thank you.
I'll take whatever I can get.
All righty, ready to move to item 42.
Your honor, this is the first reading of bill number 5898, an ordinance approving the option agreement for the contract for sale of the property commonly known as the old high school located at 300 South Sixth Street, an authorization mayor to execute all documents and other actions in connection with the purchase.
We have a staff report from Chris Lebec.
Good evening again, Mayor, members of the board. If you recall, last year, this applicant came before the board with the same idea. They wanted an option agreement to purchase the old high school property. There's actually two tracks, track one and track two. Track two is actually the building itself, and that's what they're interested in. They needed to secure the property for purposes of applying for tax credits and some block grant funding. That's one of the requirements. They have to have the build site, and they were going to put in affordable housing. They have this year approached us again about the same property, this time with a little bit different approach. Some new funding opportunities have opened up at the state and federal level, this time for affordable housing for our silver citizens, 55 and older. So that's what they are going to, and I'm looking at you, Alderman Skanes. And this is, and this is what they're going to seek for this. One question that I think came up earlier was with regards to some concerns about whether this property was properly bid out. This property was put out to an RFP earlier this year. Again, we had no bidders at that time, so we felt comfortable going forward, since we did give people in the community an opportunity to bid on it to proceed with this project. So what this is, it's an option agreement. If they do secure the proper funding, then they have the right to purchase track two for $25,000 as is, and that's the key point. So we're making no representations to this buyer, to the condition, the quality, or anything, any surprises they may find there in the old high school building. So staff recommends approval, and we're hopeful that they get the funding they need to bring some more affordable housing to the community.
You've heard the first reading of bill 5898. Do I have a motion approving this bill?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Second's been made. Anyone in the audience? All right, any alderman wishing to speak to this matter?
A quick one. Chris, has anybody thrown out a number for the asbestos removal or abatement?
Yeah, it's, and again, this is just a rough estimate from my memory. I think it was $250-plus thousand. So it is a substantial cost if somebody wanted to do that. So again, it benefits the city, and it also benefits this potential developer and all of us all around.
It's a big chunk.
Any other? Mr. Milton?
So, Chris, this is the property I was referencing earlier in the meeting.
Yes, I don't know, was it?
Yes.
Okay.
So I've been approached by a developer, saw this on the agenda, and asked the question. He knows this went under contract last year, and was asking, with this available, in his mind, with this available again, wouldn't it be prudent to take this to an RFP process instead of just awarding an option to the previous interested party?
As I stated in my earlier part of this presentation, we did do that earlier this year. We put this out to RFP, and we did not receive any bidders. So that's why we're.
So did this guy respond to the RFP?
Nobody responded to the RFP.
So that was his question, Chris. We don't need to butt heads. We sent out an RFP, nobody bid on it, he's coming in asking for an option. The question is, would it be prudent for us to go out to an RFP again to allow this particular developer an opportunity?
Prudence are not, it's not necessary. So prudence is to the board. If the board chooses not to vote for this, then that's the board's prerogative. But we did go out to RFP, we received no bidders. They've approached us, because timing is of the essence with regards to this, and this is what the city is proposing to the board.
I'd sure like to give, if others are interested, I'd sure like to give it, open it up to free market.
Mr. Simmons?
This same project, basically, they showed us before what they were going to do, what their plans were. They moved the buildings from one street over to the other street because there would be less traffic problems. Are they agreeing to do all that stuff again?
To my knowledge, yes. I think the number of units may be a little different, Alderman, as far as that makeup's concerned, but generally, it's going to be the same conceptual plan.
Okay.
I wish I could give you more detail than that at this point.
They did meet with the residents or the organization in that neighborhood, and they satisfied them. They, I think they had a good discussion, and they made some changes that were necessary. I would certainly hate to see them go back on that talk without going back to the citizens.
I agree with that, and I hope that when, if this does come to fruition, when we start looking at building permits, we start looking at traffic loads, we look at those things, in this process, we'll be able to make sure, to hold their feet to the fire during the planning and development process, as it so would be.
And was, that was not the first time that we went out for bids on that property, was it? Wasn't that the second or third time that we've gone out?
It was, and that's the other key point. Thank you for bringing that to my attention, to remind the board. This isn't the first time this property has gone out. I can think of personally three times since I've been here, we've done this, and we've had varying levels of success for people responding. Thankfully, Planning Director Hornicle is listening intently into this conversation right now, and I have my text message open, and he informs me that it is the exact same plan, only change, as I said earlier, is 55 and over.
Great, okay. And the best I recall, though, the highest bid we got for this property in any of those, and this is from memory, was $5,000.
I believe so.
I believe that's right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Chris, how much does this cost us per year, and how much do we save per year by removing this property from our inventory?
That's a good question, and I don't know. I know that there is the cost of security associated with it. We have had.
Insurance?
Insurance.
Insurance. I think there's been some long discussions about some fencing to secure the property. I know we've had at least one criminal case involved, or some high school individuals decided to take a little walkabout in the property, and we had to roll two canine dogs and a number of police officers out there, so there was that expense to the city. So again, this is, is my view from a legal standpoint, a potential liability to have it on the city's books at this point.
Do we have to deal with issues like electric or gas? There are any, boy, where's Jamie? She's got all that information, I would imagine. Do we have any cost for electricity per year in that, or at all?
I don't know. Let's see if we can summon Director Roush from the back room.
She's off to get ribs.
Oh, there we go.
I'm just trying to get some sort of feel of how much it would save us to get shed of this.
We actually shut the utilities off, so we don't have, but there's a long history of major expenses on this building. So, I mean, I could go down through history with you, but we would save quite a bit of money of just letting this happen. That's just my opinion, but I've got the numbers.
I want to see it happen, I just get some sort of idea of what we'd save.
But we did cut the utilities off to save money quite a while back, if that's helpful to you.
We still pay for the insurance, don't we? Wasn't that about $20,000?
Yes, we are paying insurance for that. I think it's considered about less, and I can get you those numbers, but we are paying that.
I'd also like to point out that this is an option for one year, so this particular proposal is they get one year to exercise their option to purchase. So I know we're looking at savings and safety in that, but.
Doesn't the option end if he does not get the?
Correct, there's an or switch in the agreement. So half of it is it's a year, otherwise, if the funding's not awarded, it dies. Okay, and that's a clause in the agreement itself.
Will the status of this property change to be taxable property, real estate then, for us to receive taxes?
I would think so.
Water, sewer?
Yeah, I mean, that's an open-ended question, Mayor, but generally, yes.
It'd be private ownership, so I assume it would.
Yeah.
All right, any others? Yes, five, no, one. Judy King voted yes, Larry Milton voted no, Jamie Whiters voted yes, Jeff C. voted yes, Bill Skanes voted yes, and Bob Simmons voted yes. Passes, five to one. Ready to move on to item 43?
Your honor, this is the first reading of bill number 5899, an ordinance amending Chapter Two, Section 28 of the Branson Municipal Co. pertaining to Administrative and Supervisory Committee.
Report from Chris Lebec.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. Last but not least, this is a proposed amendment to city code specifically, Section 2-28, which are the advisory committees to the mayor. As of right now, we have three committees, the Human Resources Committee, the Finance, or excuse me, the Budget and Finance Committee, and then the Capital Improvement Committee. What we have found is that a lot of the information, there's a lot, kind of crosses between the Budget and Finance and the Capital Improvement Committee, and then there's a need for information to cross, and there's some overlap there. So it seems like it's logical to combine those two committees together and have one committee that handles all the duties of both of those, and that's what this ordinance accomplishes. It also does one other thing, and that is, there's a hook, if you look at line 64, the proposed ordinance, and line 65, it used to say that there may be a maximum of two citizens per committee appointed annually. We've dropped that so that there is some flexibility there, because again, right now, if we're combining these two, I think we have two and two on each of them. That would make four, so we'd have to jettison two. So instead of doing that, this allows the mayor to have basically flexibility to decide who and how many to appoint based on the needs of the city. So again, we wanted to kind of open it up a little bit. So staff recommends approval. I think this will not only save board time, but also save staff time, so that staff doesn't have to sit there at a staffing expense and be a part of two separate meetings that mostly cover the same thing a lot of times. So happy to answer any questions.
Okay, you've heard the first reading of bill 5899. Do I have a motion approving?
So moved, strongly.
Second?
Second.
Anyone in the council chambers? Any alderman, additional comments?
Strongly.
Mr. Simmons?
I think this is good for a number of reasons, but I think that, looking back at it, the problems that we had with the start of the 76 project, had these been a combined committee at that time, I think a good part of that would have been avoided, because it was a communication thing, and one hand didn't know what the other one was doing. And so I think this is a very good solution to that, and I don't think that would happen again, even under the current circumstances, but this is a good insurance that it doesn't.
Absolutely, Alderman.
Any other alderman? Six present, yes, six. Alderman Simmons, Skanes, C., Whiters, Milton, and King, all vote yes, passed, 6-0. When we get toward the end here, we're now ready for. When we get toward the end here, we're now ready for reports. Begin with Alderman King.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll report that I had a wonderful opportunity to attend Branson's Fourth National Night Out last week, and I want to thank the neighborhoods in Ward Three that were very hospitable. That was Tannehill Como Heights and Heatherbrook, and I want to extend a special thanks and gratitude to our men and women in uniform across police, fire, and ambulance. I saw with my own eyes how excited the children were in those neighborhoods, to see our men and women in uniform, to see the fire truck. I, I saw how appreciative our, our communities were that we were there, and so I, I thank our staff for that. And with that, I, I know that it's been a tough year, and, and we've had a tough time budgeting, but our men and women in uniform deserve the best equipment and facilities that they need to do their job, and I personally would like to see us prioritize them getting that sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Alderman Whiters?
I had the pleasure of attending both those events in Ward Three with Alderwoman King. It was great in those neighborhoods, and, you know, I'll just reiterate what she said. One of the other things, too, in the Heatherbrook community, there was a little boy with a little police hat walking around with a five-gallon bucket collecting donations for his local police department, so that was pretty darn neat.
Thank you. Alderman Simmons?
Thank you. I was not able to attend, and I apologize for that. I've always enjoyed that, and, and have attended several of them, and, and it is amazing how much the residents appreciate, particularly the people in uniform. They, they seem tickled to see police officers, they seem tickled to see firemen. It's, it just is a whole new attitude in the, in the neighborhood when that happens. So I was sorry not to be able to attend this one, but, but I've enjoyed them in the past, and it's a great thing. Thank you.
Alderman Simmons, thank you. Alderman Sainz?
Just want to reiterate what they had said, that, but that's why we work so hard on the Public Safety Initiative, to get the funding for our police and fire, because we had projected over, well over 10 years ago, that 2019, 2020, the revenues and expenses, expenses were going to run in a cross-Caddie-Wampa-sideways relationship, and I'm glad we got it passed. I'm glad we got the things done that we have. I just want to see those buildings built before I pass away. Let's move on.
Alderman Milton?
I just briefly wanted to thank Chris Lebec and Alderman Sainz for the work we've all put in on moving forward with our CBB contract. There's been a lot of hours and work in that, and we're making progress, and I just want to say thanks.
Yeah, I forgot all about that. Good job.
All right. Alderman C.?
Nothing to report.
Administrator Dobbins?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you all for attendance tonight. I appreciate the fact that we had lots of discussion. We had another night of folks that don't seem to understand we're trying to be orderly, but, and I was taken back by the picture. I saw a picture on Facebook that I made four of the units, thanks to Chief Matthews, and went to four different neighborhoods. We have to be careful, they, they're watching, they said. And I thought of that, Larry, when, when you talk, you take your mask off, and you're the only one up here. I'm surprised they didn't take a picture of you.
They may have.
Yeah, yeah. But it's, it's, it's interesting to see what people's attitude is. I would hope that we could get through this process and start looking to the future, planning ahead, and I'm hopeful that by passing the ordinance now, that we can come back to it anytime we want to, we can come back to it when situations change, but it will be a decision for us here locally based on our circumstances. And so I'm, I'm glad for the community, I'm glad for this board for making what I consider a wise decision. That's the only comments I have. Toward the end here, we have something called an adjournment, if I remember correctly. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second, third.
Motion's been made in the second. Call for the vote?
Yes.
Yes, six, six present, meeting adjourned. Thank you.